Recording in progress.
Good evening. This is to formally advise you that the Yarmouth Select Board will be meeting today on April 15, 2025 at 5:30 p.m. here in the Yarmouth Town Hall Hearing Room at 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. For those of you who cannot attend in person but are interested, you can go to our website, and there is instructions on how you can join us via Zoom. The Yarmouth Select Board will consider entering into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 30a, Section 21a3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining in regards to proposed wage and class plan applying to SEIU units A and B, steelworkers, and non-union employees. The Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body. I call for a motion to go into executive session.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay. Can we have a voice vote on that? Mark Forrest?
Aye.
Joyce Flynn?
Aye.
Liz Argo?
Aye.
Dorcas McGurran?
Aye.
We are now in executive session. We will return at approximately 6 o'clock. Thank you.
In Mexico. She had said she wasn't going to be here tonight. At the moment. Good to see you, Ellie.
Work at the golf course.
Hi, goodness. For Ellie, I think a lot of it. People in here for Ellie's honor.
Hi, how are you? Nice to see you. Nice work.
Glad to believe that they were going to be coming. Do you want me to do that, or do you want to do that?
Good to see you.
Yeah, do you want, do you want to?
I like it.
I did. But do you want to be?
Swizz it. Love it.
Really great.
And it and the baby.
Hi.
Drawing, so there's nothing in the back yet.
Good job getting feedback.
Could take a seat, please. We're going to be starting. Good evening. Our apologies for being a little late on getting started. We are back in our regular session, and I would call for everyone to stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is announcements. Do we have any announcements for tonight?
I had a quick one. I wanted to make note of the new green stormwater system that was, is under construction at Standish Way in Yarmouth. Another grant that was, the town managed to bring on, and it's in the process of being completed. So, another good news for the town of Yarmouth.
Thank you, Liz. Do we have any other announcements for tonight? I open it up then to public comment. Do we have anyone here in the audience who has public comment tonight?
I don't see any.
Okay. I see some hands on, Kurt, do you have some public comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'm here to ruin your night.
Okay.
So, there's a whole bunch. I always have a constant list. I know you're going to talk about PFROs tonight, and I don't know if it's related, but digging shellfish at Mill Creek, does anybody test that shellfish to tell if it's, if it's any good? With all these plumes of pollution that seem to be moving everywhere. So, that's one. I knew you were going to talk about a farmer's market at Taylor Bray Farm, and I'm curious with all the John Tolly hoopla going on right now with farmer's markets, are either Taylor Bray Farm or the cultural center land commercially zoned, and yet they have a farmer's market? Now, I could be wrong, but it would seem to me maybe you take a look at the farmer's market policy, which is yours, and see if you can modify that to slot us, I don't know, I want to say public lynching, but it's not pretty, as we've all seen. I brought it before about dead wood, trees that are standing on the side of the road. We're lucky they haven't fallen and killed anybody yet, and yet they're still there.
Where's that, Kurt?
White Rock, for example, Union Street. Just, I'm going to suggest to all of you, take, open your eyes and look around when you drive around the town, because...
Drawing, so there's nothing in the back yet.
Good meeting last Thursday. Good job getting feedback.
Could take a seat, please. We're going to be starting. Good evening. Our apologies for being a little late on getting started. We are back in our regular session, and I would call for everyone to stand, please, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is announcements. Do we have any announcements for tonight?
I had a quick one. I wanted to make note of the new green stormwater system that was, is under construction at Standish Way in Yarmouth. Another grant that was, the town managed to bring on, and it's in the process of being completed, so another good news for the town of Yarmouth.
Thank you, Liz. Do we have any other announcements for tonight? I open it up then to public comment. Do we have anyone here in the audience who has public comment tonight? Okay, I see some hands on, Kurt, do you have some public comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'm here to ruin your night.
Okay.
So, there's a whole bunch. I always have a constant list. I know you're going to talk about PFrost tonight, and I don't know if it's related, but digging shellfish at Mill Creek, does anybody test that shellfish to tell if it's if it's any good? With all these plumes of pollution that seem to be moving everywhere. So that's one. I knew you were going to talk about a farmer's market at Taylor Bray Farm. And I'm curious with all the John Tully hoopla going on right now with farmer's markets, are either Taylor Bray Farm or the Cultural Center land commercially zoned, and yet they have a farmer's market? Now, I could be wrong, but it would seem to me maybe you take a look at the farmer's market policy, which is yours, and see if you can modify that to slot this, I don't know, I want to say public lynching, but it's not pretty, as we've all seen. I brought it before about deadwood trees that are standing on the side of the road. We're lucky they haven't fallen and killed anybody yet, and yet they're still there.
Where's that, Kurt?
White Rock, for example, Union Street, just, I'm going to suggest to all of you, take, open your eyes and look around when you drive around the town, because I see things like this all over the place. Another one is road runoff, and I know you just mentioned stormwater, but I've been noticing a lot lately about where the runoff from the roads goes directly into some sort of wetland. There's a lot of it, you'd be surprised. Now, we have stormwater money in the budget every year. Kind of curious what gets done. I never hear much of a report on, yeah, we took that, say $300,000, whatever the number is, and we did this with it last year. And yet, the same problems that have been existing for decades are still there. Bayview Beach, the street and the parking lot are related. The water runs all the way down to Bayview, into the parking lot, the parking lot's broken up, and it goes right into Lewis Bay. Now, again, I brought this to your attention before. The parks in the town, common idea. I notice there's a resignation on your agenda for somebody who's so frustrated at the lack of care for our existing parks, and yet we think it's a good idea to spend $100,000 to go study another one. Think it's what, between the drive-in and the other parks, probably what, $13 million combined, maybe more? For what? When we did the first park there across Mackey Laundry, we planted shrubs, and there was a bench so you could look out over the creek. The shrubs are this tall, off the ground. They're now this tall. So when you sit in the bench, all you do is look at the trees, because nobody ever, ever took care of anything. And let's see, the other one is the road override. Tracy started to talk about it last time. You know, everybody says 1.1 million. 1.1 million plus the 2.5%. We promised the people that if they passed that override, we would keep that money with the roads, with the 2.5% to keep up with inflation. And I'm the guy who sat there in town, meeting stage and said that. So it's not those things where people don't think I know what I'm talking about, I know exactly what I'm talking about. That, it's been whack-a-mole with this, this particular article since it's been passed. It's ridiculous. And again, go back to my stormwater comments. You could use that roadwork money to help with stormwater problem, and road runoff problems. To me, it would be pretty simple. I got a little, I was reading an article in the Boston Magazine about the bike lanes in the city, how it's driving everybody crazy. And it's credited to a guy named Bruce Persolay, says he owns commercial property throughout the city. The city's bike lane project is a triumph of ideology over rational thought. You should always think about your rational thought and your ideology together, not let one over trump the other, because then you end up with the messes we have today, like, you know, another one is, is the road conditions and the constant, you know, inconvenience is a small word to use for what's going on. I've been, how many times myself, just talking about this? The whole town is up in arms, people can't do business. I've been told that Route 28 is not going to be repaved till fall. When you finish crushing the tourism vision, you'll have nothing left here. Remember that. These businesses are not going to survive. Every year it's to cry about, well, our rush, our ratio between residential and commercial tax revenue is way, way out of whack, and what's it do? It just keeps getting worse. And yet, we continue to let the contractor do whatever he wants with total disregard for everybody. I know one person who had trenches dug on both sides of his property at the same time so that he could not access his property, at least three times. Another time, they said, you got to move your truck so we can get through your property. Then there's another case of where the contractor's been storing all of it on somebody's property and destroying it, and they were told that they would be paid, they would be compensated for the rent of their property. Person called the town, the town said, call the state. They called the state, the state said, call the town. Nothing got done. It's time to stop accepting all this. We can do better, we deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Next?
My name is Jerry O'Connell. I live in Precinct Four. Does the town of Yarmouth give taxpayer money to the Cultural Center? In Yarmouth, down the Bass River? Yes?
Jerry, we don't give comment back on your public comment.
Okay. Protests, anti-government protests are being planned and coordinated at the Cultural Center. That's not acceptable.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the room? Online, I see we have Christopher Garen's phone? Christopher?
Yes, so, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, thank you so much. Yes, I am here in support of Yarmouth resident John Tully, the lobster man. During the April 1st Select Board meeting, Select Board member Mark Forrest proposed that the board issue a joint statement regarding the lobster man case. Member Forrest indicated that he had received significant public feedback in support of the lobster man, and he was aware of media reports about the situation. He asserted that, as the only citizen-elect in board in Yarmouth, the Select Board members have a responsibility to issue a statement acknowledging the case, which was then scheduled before the Yarmouth Zoning Board on April 10th. The zoning board members are appointed and not elected directly by Yarmouth citizens. Although Member Forrest did not read a prepared draft or specifically indicate what the statement would say, he appeared sympathetic to the lobster man and public, and to the public feedback, as well as concerned over the zoning board's ultimate decision, how it could influence the town, given the media coverage. Town Administrator Wittenhour added that, in hindsight, the lobster man's case could possibly have been resolved differently had it been handled another way, but unfortunately, once the zoning board denied the lobster man's case in its original October 2024 decision, no procedural mechanism existed to change it. After a thorough discussion, it lasted the last 30 minutes of the board hearing, the board decided not to issue a joint statement and left the decision to the zoning board. As we all know and saw, the zoning board denied the lobster man's case on April 10th. Now we are facing a public relations disaster that has spread to the Boston media and social media, which threatens Yarmouth's historic legacy as a Cape Cod fishing town, as well as economically damaging the summer, this summer's tourist season. This case never should have been assigned to the zoning board in the first place. Yarmouth's historic legacy as a fishing town and the unique facts in this case, as they show. The cost of enforcing this law far outweighs the benefits. In light of the foregoing, it is in the best interest of the town of Yarmouth that the Select Board, as the only elected board directly by the citizens, reconsider Member Forrest's proposal and to not only issue a statement, but resolve the issue in favor of the lobster man for the following reasons. As Mr. Wittenhour indicated, this matter could have been resolved in the early stages. Yarmouth passed the law in 1981. Mr. Tully had been selling lobsters from his home prior to that, when it was legal, and he is a licensed Massachusetts lobsterman. He continued selling the lobsters from his house after 1981, until recently, nearly 45 years later, when someone filed a complaint. For some reason, Yarmouth never cited Mr. Tully for nearly 45 years, and so during this time, it, you know, it doesn't make sense. For some reason, Yarmouth never cited him. Either Yarmouth knew or should have known that the lob, that Mr. Tully continued to sell his lobsters from his home. Nevertheless, given this length of time, Yarmouth has essentially waived its legitimacy to enforce this law. It doesn't fit the unique facts of this case. Mr. Tully is a throwback to Yarmouth's historic legacy as a Cape Cod fishing town. Allowing Mr. Tully to continue poses little harm to the community, given that no one else in, no resident in Yarmouth is doing this. As a result, Yarmouth faces a disastrous economic summer season. Yarmouth Planning Board reports that Yarmouth's population swells nearly 200% during the summer. That's about 50,000 tourists. These prospective tourists, however, are not currently hearing about Yarmouth's beautiful South Shore beaches, resorts, restaurants, everything this town has to offer to vacationers. Instead, prospective tourists are hearing about Yarmouth forcing an old-time lobsterman out of business based on nearly 45 years, a 45-year-old law that the town has never enforced. Yarmouth relies on summer season rental and meal taxes to fund its sewer project, as well as other essential services. As this board has discussed in prior meetings, businesses will end the gentleman earlier. Businesses along Route 28 are hurting due to the sewer construction and road closures. These businesses are relying on a strong summer season to survive. The publicity from enforcing this law threatens to turn off tourists and cause a subpar economic summer, potentially causing a budget shortfall for Yarmouth's government. A budget shortfall could force this board to ask the people for a budget override to fill the gap. Please avoid a budget shortfall and use your authority in the best interest of the town, of Yarmouth, to override this issue immediately. Work with Mr. Tully and don't delay. Mr. Wittenhour, you deserve tremendous credit for the accomplishments you have achieved as town administrator. You have demonstrated that your superpower is solving difficult situations. Please use your superpower here. You identified the problem during the April 1st meeting and indicated that it possibly could have been resolved. Don't worry about lawsuits, because Yarmouth is already in court. It's the court of public opinion, and it isn't looking good. And don't hide behind bureaucratic jurisdictional turf battles between different boards, because the Select Board is elected directly by the citizens of Yarmouth. That's giving it the authority to act in the town's best interest. In closing, we should all thank the Yarmouth Police Chief Lennon and the officers on duty during the zoning board hearing. While members of the audience were clearly passionate and frustrated by the zoning board's decision, the officers properly assessed that the audience members were law-abiding and posed no threat or disruption to the hearing. Instead of clearing the room, as requested by the zoning board chairman, who presided over the hearing remotely, the officers patiently waited for the audience to leave, which only took about 10 minutes. The YouTube video of the hearing clearly shows the officers politely waiting for the audience to disperse, while also conversing with audience members who are clearly smiling and friendly with the officers. No more hearings were scheduled for the night, and the audience left the room, and when, once the audience left the room, the zoning board quickly voted to confirm the minutes of the prior hearing and close the meeting. The entire zoning board meeting from start to finish lasted only an hour and 15 minutes, closing at 7:15 PM. Can you imagine, however, if the officers chose or thought that, you know, force was necessary and arrested in order to people to, in order to clear the room? That would have been a worse public relations disaster than we are currently facing. So therefore, members of the Select Board, in the best interest of Yarmouth, please resolve this issue in favor of Mr. Tully. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. I see Vida Morris, you have your hand up? Vida?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can. Go right ahead.
I, I would like to endorse both of what Kurt Sears said, especially having to do with the dead trees on White Rock Road there. That, that's really such a disaster, it's unbelievable. And a couple of the other things that he said, I, but I especially want to endorse what this previous speaker said so eloquently about Mr. Tully's case. And I, I sort of, I want to endorse his idea that, that this board needs to get its act together and reconsider the, what happened at the last meeting, or the, where, where at least one of your members thought that you maybe should have, thought of, of doing a sense of the, of the board kind of vote, or what have you. So please, I mean, listen carefully with what this gentleman said, because he presented it in the perfect way, and you need to do something about this, because as he said, you have a public relations disaster on your hands right at the moment. Now, I want to ask a question unrelated. Is the public going to be able to participate in the warrant presentation later on?
If any, anybody wants to make any comments on Ellie Lawrence's present citation, yes, I will allow that.
What? No, I'm talking, no, I'm talking about the warrant.
The warrant?
The warrant article.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Vida. I thought, I thought you said Lawrence. I got to get my wax out of my ears. Okay, sorry. No, on that part, we will not be accepting any public comment.
Okay, so, so you're, in other words, all right, so I can do my, my piece right now, but, but you're going away from several years of practice that we had when it was, had become obvious that the five and six-hour and two-day meetings had become the norm. So you're going right back to it, because you're not giving the people a chance to get their questions asked and answered before we get to the town meeting, and so that's, that's going to have to be done then, right?
Well, you bring up a good point, Vida.
I thought, I thought this had become a, it may not be a voted kind of tradition, because the reason that that was allowed about three, four years ago, whenever, was to shorten the town meeting.
Yeah, I hear you, Vida, and we will allow it during that point in time. So you can hold your questions for that portion when we do the preview.
All right, that's, that's why I'm going to hold that until then. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Joe Glenn has his hand up.
Hi, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
I can indeed, Joe.
Good evening. I'm Joe Glenn, South Yarmouth. I just want to echo all of the previous speakers. They all spoke eloquently and all very important points. I just want to kind of endorse what you've got coming forward in regards to the monument, because I think it goes to all of those previous points, the historic nature of this town. And if you can think of 450 families in this town during the revolution, and 445 members fought in the revolution, so that's basically one member per family that were in this town. That's just amazing. But the history of this town goes so much further, and it's so important. James Otis, who a lot of people know what he said, but they don't know that he said it, and he was from here and he represented here. James Otis was the one who coined the phrase, taxation without representation is tyranny. That's right here. And with the, the naming of the town of Yarmouth, one of the original thatchers, where that monument is going to be at Thatcher Park, well, the, the first Mr. Thatcher was the first land grant owner in Yarmouth. He was from Barnstable, Barnstaple, England. So you'd think that they would have just carried over the land from Barnstable, but he didn't. They didn't. They wanted to name Yarmouth. And then what they, what it reminded them of was a fishing village in England, Yarmouth Seaside Village, in Yarmouth, England. And my point being that we got to keep this history up. We got to learn it, we got to preserve it. You know, we talk about grandfathering, we're talking about great-grandfathering, we're talking about the indigenous people, the, the Maticasid, you know, everybody knows the Wampanoag, but, you know, the Maticas School, that's, that's, that's the Maticasid tribe, which was much smaller, it was, it was right here, and their Maticasid was named for, Maticas was named for the land between the borders of water, the old land between the borders of water. So that tells you the history going back thousands of years, and lobster was, if it wasn't at the first Thanksgiving, it was at all the other ones, and lobster was washing up on shore. So we got to preserve that history. I commend that, the group that's honoring those Revolutionary War heroes and, and our, our forefathers, because they're, that, that's what started. America started, not just in Boston, Adams and, and all the forefathers, they quoted James Otis. And so it started here. America started right here in Yarmouth. Thanks very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Joe. Interesting history lesson. Okay, moving on to our next item that we have on the agenda, because I don't see any other hands up. We have recognition of service for Ellie Lawrence. Why don't you have a stand, why don't you have a place at the podium? I've got a few things to say first, and then we'll give you a chance to, to say a few words. Ellie's experience with the town runs deep. As a volunteer and as a staff person, it seems that Ellie's love of water and the natural environment, coupled with her commitment to the town, have driven much of this work. As a staff person, Ellie, also known as Captain Lawrence, As a staff person, Ellie, also known as Captain Lawrence, has worked with both the Recreation Department, where she was an integral part of the town's sailing program, and the Department of Natural Resources, where she was a warfinger and an assistant harbor master for more than 40 years.
That was a baby.
As a volunteer, Ellie has served on the Waterways and Shellfish Advisory Committee for more than 20 years, since 2003. And during much of this same time, from 2016 to 2024, Ellie also served on the Conservation Commission with three years as its vice chair. During her time in the Conservation Commission, Captain Lawrence provided invaluable institutional knowledge from her life experience living and working in and around the Bass River. She provided essential support to the division, completing tasks and reviews that staff would typically complete when there was an extended vacancy. And Ellie even assisted with onboarding and training of the conservation administrators when there was no overlap in the position. Most recently, Captain Lawrence participated enthusiastically in a work-intensive ad hoc committee to update the open space and recreation plan, participating in two-hour weekly meetings for over a year. Ellie has consistently and fairly applied the water wetlands regulations and has shown inspiring commitment to wetlands protection and the health of the Bass River, especially with complex and difficult projects. The town is truly grateful to Ellie for her service. And finally, Ellie's generous nature and love and skill of photography has contributed broadly to the town's inventory of professional-grade photographs of natural resources, as well as hours and hours of donated drone coverage that has helped promote awareness of the town's progress on important projects such as the Parker's River Landing. Ellie's good humor and care for others makes her a pleasure to work with. Ellie, we thank you.
I have nothing to say now.
Before you say anything, I have one more thing to bring up.
Well, unfortunately, you covered everything that I was gonna say.
Oh, okay, well, I have a citation for you from the Town of Yarmouth Select Board. An official citation being known that the Town of Yarmouth hereby recognizes Eleanor B. Ellie Lawrence as, and on her generous contributions as employee and volunteer. And be it further known that the Town of Yarmouth extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation for her tireless commitment to and participation within the community for 42 years. We acknowledge her dedication not only as a longtime member of the Shellfish and Waterways Committee and as Conservation Commissioner, where she served as vice chair, Conservation Commission, where she served as vice chair from 2021 to 2024, but also was warfinger and assistant harbor master in the Division of Natural Resources and the Yarmouth Recreation Sailing Program, where Captain Lawrence dedicated herself to teaching the skills and joy of sailing to hundreds of children. Be it further known that we acknowledge and appreciate the generous donation of time and knowledge of the town's natural resources, as demonstrated by Ellie's work with the Conservation Division and through her skilled and beautiful photographs and drone coverage in support of town projects. This citation has been approved by the Yarmouth Select Board on this 15th day of April in the year of our Lord 2025. Ellie Lawrence. Come on back to the podium where we can hear you.
Mine's short and sweet. I want to thank you all. My family has been Yarmouth residents since way back in the 1600s, with six generations living along Bass River. I grew up spending every summer on, in, or mucking around the shores of the river, sailing, swimming, rowing, exploring, or just watching the river flow. It's close to my heart. In the early eighties, Jack Silver, I don't know if anybody remembers Jack Silver, he was the original, yeah, the original harbor master at the time, and he offered me a summer job as an assistant harbor master for the town. And like a true river rat, I didn't hesitate to accept. Over the years, over the summer, I split my time between Bass River and Lewis Bay, learning the ins and outs of the bay, and added to my knowledge the waterways of Yarmouth and my love of the natural beauty of the town. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that there's a couple of rocks out there that has my name on it. As my experience grew, so did my involvement in the different aspects of Yarmouth's natural beauty related to the waterways and the opportunities that were available to the public. I'm one who believes that the sea can be a great soother or at times a difficult taskmaster. The, to me, there is nothing more gratifying than seeing children learning confidence being on the water and mastering a boat. That was with the sailing. I really love it. Many years, many hats, many committees later, I can say that one of the best parts of my involvement have been the people I have met over the years and the friendships that have grown from the association that I've had with the town. And I thank you all for being there. I want to thank you all for also being on this journey with me. I wouldn't have happened without you. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellie.
I would, I would also like to add that there is another committee that I may join.
And does anyone from the public have any comments they'd like to make for Ellie? Okay, thank you all very much. And we're moving on to the next item that we have on the agenda, which is the Taylor Bray Farmers Market. We'll give a moment for everyone that's gonna be leaving us to go right ahead. Great support for you, Ellie. I love it. Thank you.
Was that her drain under the chair?
I don't know.
It's Ellie's, yeah, so I take it for it. She had a fan club for sure.
Quite an entourage.
Exactly. That's great.
Glad to see it. Okay, moving on to the Taylor Bray Farmers Market, I'm going to turn it over to Bob at this point.
Well, we're gonna have a, a presentation from the committee on, on the market and then see if the board has questions and it needs a vote of approval.
Okay. If you'd like to just identify yourselves for us, please.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair and Select Board members. My name is Lisa McIntyre and with me is Marty Murphy. We are both on the Board of Directors for the Taylor Bray Farm Preservation Association. We are requested to be placed on the agenda tonight to seek the Select Board's approval for a farmer's market held at Taylor Bray Farm in Yarmouth Port. It would consist of six Sundays, beginning June 22, 2025, and ending September 7, 2025. The market will run from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Our proposal outlines a plan to establish a local farmer's market at Taylor Bray Farm. Our goal is to provide residents and visitors with access to freshly grown produce, agriculture, seafood, and artisan-made food, foods and goods, which will be sourced from local Cape Cod farms. We want to encourage people to shop locally and are hoping to promote sustainability and foster a sense of community while also supporting the local economy. Additionally, we would be increasing the use and awareness of Yarmouth Port's historic 1639 farm on the north side in a positive and inclusive manner. We are pleased to collaborate with the town on guidelines, requirements, and permitting, which have been submitted in the farm markers, market vendors' guidelines, which was a group email that was sent with Mary Alice. I would just like to make one note, one part of the email from the Yarmouth Board of Health. I've amended point number four on the first page to include his comment about including all vendors must be licensed and inspected by the Yarmouth Board of Health instead of and obtain a permit from the Yarmouth Board of Health. So I did make that change and I can submit that back into circulation. In addition to the guidelines, we've also submitted a site plan, which is up on the board, which indicates our existing buildings, parking areas for the farmer's market, and also where the farmer's market would actually take place on the farm. We have additional area to expand the market, but I think because it is a pilot project, we'd like to keep the farmer's market small this year and use local farmers and sustainable resources in the community rather than use vendors that offer resale of other people's In addition, we've also submitted an application for the use of town-owned property and have attached a certificate of insurance. On behalf of Marty and myself and the Taylor Bray Farm Preservation Association, I thank you for considering our proposal and look forward to discussing how we can make our vision to support the local farmer and community a reality.
Thank you, Lisa. Do you have anything to add?
No, I just, this has been Lisa's project and she's done a lot of research on it, thought about doing it last year, ran out of time to organize it, put it all together, and she's worked on it all by herself. She's done a great job. I think it'd be a good thing for the, for the association and I think it'd be a good thing for the town.
Thank you. I'm gonna have the board be able to ask you some questions, Liz.
I should know, but I don't know. Is, are there bathrooms that are gonna be open? Okay.
We have a bathroom in the farmhouse.
All right. I, I'm also curious, I see we have Don McIntyre Trail. Is that a relation?
My father-in-law.
Okay. So this is a, a home. This is your baby.
It is, it has very close to my heart and today's his birthday, so today is extra special.
Today's his birthday? Oh, wow. And then I have one request while you're making amendments to the parameters. Also, number nine, the samples that you're, that may or may not be passed out, individual paper, it says, or plastic containers with disposable utensils. And as you probably know, we are soon going to be banning plastic containers. So I think you're gonna want to change that and eliminate plastic containers, which is something we're grappling with, but you might as well get ahead of it. That's it for me.
Joyce?
Well, I'm delighted to think there'll be a farmer's market in Yarmouth on a second day. It's lovely that both weekend days will have healthy food available. And thank you for all the work you've put into this.
Mark?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for coming forward with the proposal. I think this will be wonderful, both for farmers, but I think, as was stated before, I think it's wonderful for the town in showing its support for our farmers.
Thank you for your support.
I also think it's gonna be wonderful for the people that live in town to have this opportunity and for Bray Farm. I think that Bray Farm still is kind of like one of our best-kept secrets in town. So I think this will start bringing even more people out to the farm to see how amazing it really is. Okay, do we have a motion to accept?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the planning as presented with the slight edits proposed by Lisa McIntyre and Liz Argo.
Do I have a second on that?
Madam Chair, before we entertain a motion, did we open up for any public comments or any?
You're right, we should. Are there any public comments?
Yes, how many vendors will that support? How many farmers can sell this stuff there?
Well, I think because it's our pilot year that we're gonna start out on the smaller size, maybe 20 vendors at the max, and we'll go from there. And the 20 vendors also include some people from the community as far as education, sustainability, whether it's the master gardeners, beekeepers, things that enhance our community as far as, I would say, sustainability and, you know, healthy food choices.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We look forward to it.
Before we leave, just a note, the Sheep Festival is coming up on June 14th. It's one of our largest fundraisers of the year. We'll leave some of these around Town Hall.
By all means.
Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item that we have on our agenda tonight is the Yarmouth Revolutionary War Monument Design. I see Bob Kelly in the room.
Make sure you pull that microphone closer so we can hear it.
I'd like to introduce, I'm Bob Kelly, Vice Chair of the Yarmouth Historic Commission. I'd like to introduce David Gina Kopoulos, member of the Yarmouth Historical Commission, and Robert Schuer, who is the designer of the monument that we were gonna talk about Little background. The 250th Initiative, the celebrations across the Commonwealth and Cape Cod. Research efforts by Jack Duggan, David Schaefer, document the names of more than 450 Yarmouth veterans, which this monument is dedicated to. And I might add, there are more, but could not be proven. So to make the list, you had to have some document that said you were actually from Yarmouth. If you give, if you take a number from the 1790 census, which is only seven years away from the end of the revolution, there were 651 males over the age of 16 in Yarmouth. 455 participant, known participants in the Revolutionary War is about 70% of that number, which is amazing, probably one at least from every family. which is amazing, probably one at least from every family. The design fund, funding was secured, a tourism fund overseen by the Community Economic and Development Committee. The Community Preservation Act application made for the fabric, was made for the fabrication. This will be voted at the April 29th Annual Town Meeting. So the funds were available for the design. Staff has filled, also filled out an application for, with MA 250 grant program to offset the costs of the town. Awards are tentatively scheduled to be made in May, so we look forward to that. With the assistance of Svetlana Salam, the procurement program manager for Yarmouth, we hired Skylight Studios to do the work with the project committee to develop and design and to move forward. Skylight Studios is owned and operated by Robert Schuer. He has a very impressive resume of monuments and memorials. You can look at their, at their website if you want to have a look at his work. It really is something. In preparation for this meeting, the Historical Commission hosted a public comment session last Thursday at the Yarmouth Port Fire Station. There were about 20 people in attendance, and at this meeting, we shared two final options and took feedback from the attendant, attendees. This is option one. Well, okay, I'll just leave that for a moment. The Yarmouth Port Playground, also known as Thatcher Park, has, was chosen as the appropriate site for the monument by the Select Board on December 10th, 2024. A subsequent public meeting discussed the possible locations on the site, within that particular site, with a group set line on the northernmost point. While the exact location has not been determined, the committee feels the monument should be placed close to the flagpole and away from the playground. As a point of interest, a deed from Lewis B. Thatcher in 1924 on, on the property, who was deeded that property in 1903 from Edwin Thatcher, and in the deed, it states "to be used by the town for a common and a playground." Both options were presented very similar, with the exception of a bronze statue and some of other decorative elements. While Soaring Eagle Eagle was also considered for a top of the monument, the overwhelming consensus was the use and depiction of a colonial family. So what we have here is a man holding a baby with his wife and a rifle. And this was the second option. The monument is a combination of domestically sourced granite from Barry, Vermont, and bronze. Domestically, I'm sorry, dimensionally, the monument is 11 feet high by eight feet wide by two feet deep. Please note the designs are still conceptual, so that's why it's a line drawing. The monument will be fully finished in the back. The extensive research done has resulted in a whopping 455 names, which necessitates having the names placed on both the front and the back of the monument. They'll be placed in alphabetical order. The family, revolutionary soldier, wife and child, plow. The sculpture represents representative of the sacrifice demonstrated by the family to support the cause. The husband is leaving off to war, leaving his familial responsibilities, including the farm, to his wife. While most women don't necessarily go to war, they were supporting the war on the home front. Granite includes a combination of flat and rustic, rusticated finishes. A bronze plaque with the names and the year of death for 455. Now, some, we didn't know what the death year was, so there won't be a death date for them. But if there were, like there are three Seth Bakers, there's two with death dates and one without one, so you can recognize your, your ancestor. On the front, there's a soaring eagle, which is a symbol of strength, freedom, and vision. The scroll in the middle of the monument, in amongst the names, was transcribed out of the June 20th, 1776 Town Minutes. So it's extremely unique to Yarmouth, and it noted that Yarmouth declared independence two weeks earlier than the nation did. Vertical side decorations, bronze laurel signifies victory, honor, and glory. On the back, crossed colonial flags, Betsy Ross-style, 13 stars in a circle. Map of Revolutionary Yarmouth. So the map that's there now is only temporary. Yarmouth was Dennis and Yarmouth, so we, we will craft a new map with those boundaries to be appropriate for the monument. Because the names on the monument represent old Yarmouth, which is, was both East Precinct and West Precinct. Space for additional decoration, picture, words, is to be determined. So there's a little plaque on the bottom, so that when other names are discovered after 10 or 15 years, they can be added. So whatever words we plan to put down there on the bottom in the back can be replaced with new names when the appropriate time comes. Vertical side decorations, bronze laurel signifies victory, honor, glory. Did I say that already? So at the, at the public meeting last week, there was discussion about, let me see if Okay. The engravings of the laurel leaves on the left and the palm leaves on the right. So the feeling was, from the committee members, that the bronze stood out more, even though there were some comments that the bronze laurel leaves might be overbearing, the committee did not think so. And although the palm leaves are really nice, I don't think anyone here in 1775 ever saw a palm leaf, so. Other issues raised in our meeting was traffic. Other than the actual dedication to the monument, where there'll probably be a lot of traffic, we don't expect that there's going to be crowds of people looking at this monument ongoing. So we think, you know, we don't expect a lot of traffic in the area. Maintenance, this, we, we chose the bronze pretty much because it's maintenance-free for, you know, 10, 15, 20 years. And we don't expect much, we do expect some, but not much maintenance on this monument. And kids climbing, the monument getting hurt. It's pretty tall. I suppose if a kid wanted to get up there, he could.
Or grown up.
And the, you know, the bronze laurel leaves are fixed into the stone, and so they're not going to be able to pull those off. And so, and also, the sentiment is that there's a monument and not a lot of other stuff around it, like benches and this and that, possibly an interpretive sign to explain some of what's on the monument and something about Yarmouth's role in the revolution. Some of the fun facts are, there's 35 Bakers on the monument, 22 Sears, 15 Thatchers, five Kellys, no Gina Kopouloses. Greens or Shermans.
You did say there were names still to be added, though.
I did.
Still researching, yeah.
And so, the committee chose this, from all the feedback, this version instead of this version.
Good choice.
And the monument is totally unique. Robert, would you like to say something about the monument itself?
Well, sure. It, it's unique in the sense that the sculptural elements and the design are unique, but in, the, the design was intentionally made to look historic and to reflect the Revolutionary War and different monuments at that time. So it kind, kind of has a history to it, you know, it's a little bit under the radar, but the family design was unique by me because I thought that, you know, it, it truly speaks, it's educational in a way. You know, children will be asking what it's about and what the plow is and what that is a symbol of, so it's engaging in that type of way. And that, so it, and, and it kind of symbolizes the spirit of the American family and, you know, willing to serve the country, our new country, and go off to war and leave the farming implements behind. And the, the plow actually was inspired by the famous Daniel Chester French Minuteman statue at the old North Bridge, where the Minuteman, man is about to run off and it's the plow by his side, musket in his hand. And then the other elements, like Bob said, I tried to design to make unique to Yarmouth, the map and the scroll with the minutes from the town meeting, and, you know, typical images of the colonial flag and, you know, the eagle. This eagle is a symbol of American, American glory and that type of thing. So it's kind of a combination of a lot of different thoughts all put together in one design.
Very interesting. Okay, let me see if there are any questions for you. Mark?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Once again, thank you for the presentation and thank you for all your work. You and fellow committee members deserve a great deal of praise and kudos for what you've accomplished. This design is beautiful.
Yeah.
And I attended the public meeting the other night at the Yarmouth Port Fire Station, and I think generally, the consensus from the community was that this was, this was the appropriate monument. And I should also point out that at the public meeting, there was some discussion about the site, and I was, I was impressed with a comment from one gentleman who had heard some concern about a monument like this being in a playground and concern about potential conflicts with playground activities. And this individual basically said that he actually thought, instead of a conflict, it's an appropriate place, because what better way for children to learn about Yarmouth's contributions and the contributions in serving this country at the time of the revolution than to be present and to be in an area where there are lots of children to see this? And I think the other point that I was struck with was the fact that this area is sacred. I mean, when you think about it, and what we're doing is we are honoring a sacred site here in the town of Yarmouth. The reason why this site was chosen was because so many people who served, who answered the call, came to this place, this special place here, to train and to come together to train and to, in common cause, on behalf of this, this, this revolution and soon-to-be country. And so I can't think of a better way to memorialize, to sort of draw attention to, to a sacred site than by blessing it with the presence of this monument here. So I think you've done a wonderful job. I think your, your artistry, your, your vision here, I think, is, is wonderful. And I was very pleased that even though the discussion the other night at the fire station was a bit spirited, I honestly believe that everyone, despite the variety of opinions, by the end of the discussion, there was a great deal of unanimity behind all of this. And I think that's a tribute to you and the way in which you've approached your task. I think your ongoing openness and interest in getting public interests, public input, public commentary, I think, has been, has been a tribute to you, but it's also reflected in the support that the community has. Because I know there's been some concern about the actual location, but like I said before, I think that discussion pretty much brought it out in the open, that that's the sacred site. The, this is, this is, we trained there first, right? And it's in keeping with the Thatcher deed, which is a common and a playground, and this is an appropriate structure in a town-owned common. So I think it's, it's entirely appropriate. So once again, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Mark. Joyce?
Oh, well, the design is exquisite, and I think you absolutely made the right choice of the two finalists. I love the juxtaposition of the rifle and the plow and the way that implies returning to life in Yarmouth. I, I really like this monument. When, when do you expect it will be completed?
We expect to dedicate this monument on the anniversary of the day. That Yarmouth declared independence, which is June 20th next year.
I look forward to it. Thank you all.
Liz?
I, and I also just adore it. I, I just want to be impertinent and, and make sure that everything is authentic, the shoes, down to the buttons on the dress, was the dress.
It's a concept.
Length.
It is a concept drawing, and.
Okay.
The little fine details will be hammered out on the dress.
Okay, good, because we've had some issues with not being authentic in the past. We want to make sure we're very authentic. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
I want to really thank you and the commission members for all the good due diligence that you did with this. And as Mark was saying, coming to a consensus from the public, you, you certainly got their input back. So I think you can feel very comfortable that what's going to be going to town meeting is something that's really being supported by the town. And I look forward to seeing it when we dedicate it next year. So thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks. I have a, I have one comment. I, I'd like to thank Karen Green and Lisa.
Yeah.
And also Nate Wetton was also on the, on the committee, but Karen Green's knowledge of how the town works and, you know, she helped us with all these public meetings, her and, her and Lisa, so I'd like to thank them. And I'd like to make one other comment, and I'll thank Joe Glenn for his earlier comment. This is only, we can do these historical great things as long as someone's out there doing the research. If you don't have the research, you can't do. If you don't have the research, you can't do the public display. And James Otis, I believe, was from Barnstable. And the Halletts were the first family in this area prior to 1639, most of their property in Barnstable, but some of it crossed over the Millbrook, and those are the Halletts of Yarmouth. Just so we're clear.
Chris, I think you have some comments?
Yeah, yes, I was going to comment on this being quite stunning and really appreciative of all the work indeed, like Mark has talked about, that took place. I'm actually a DAR, but Jonathan Church came from Vermont, so we won't be seeing that. The one question I have is, I have worked since the beginning on the gravestone cleaning projects at the ancient cemetery. And one of the things you mentioned was the use of rusticated granite in there. And I have to tell you that when we clean stones there, that possibly the most lichen-attracting and most difficult to clean are things like that. The smoother surfaces work a lot better. So, I just, you know, I know you're talking about maintenance on the bronze. I also think you need to do some consideration of the maintenance on the stone and exactly how it's carved and things like that because that whole area, you know, ancient cemetery and everything, has been a nightmare for certain things. And if you ask any of the wonderful volunteers over the years, we'll tell you exactly how much we hate the color yellow and other kinds of green and things like that. And it gets to be kind of tiresome after you've spent hours and hours trying to get it off of something. So, I just would ask you to really think and take a look at the carvings and the design on the rusticated pieces about whether or not they'll be able to be maintained without a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess formally, just to be sure that we have motion and acceptance of option A as presented by the Historic Commission?
So, moved, Madam Chair, and with great thanks to the committee and to the artists.
Second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you have a voice unanimous. We look forward to seeing you at town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Yeah, I know it was Nate.
I thought he was somebody I should know.
Yes, absolutely. Definitely be there for sure.
Nice presentation, too. Very beautifully done.
How's that leg doing, Bob? Glad to hear it. It's good to see you up and about.
Thanks.
Okay. The next item that we have on our agenda tonight is for discussion and update on the PFOS and environmental non-water supply concerns with Kleinfelder, our consultant. And I turn it over to Bob at this point.
Yes, and you folks know Nate Stevens and Lisa Stone from Kleinfelder. I want to thank them for the work that they've done since the last meeting with the Select Board. You know, they've really dived into the issues surrounding PFOS, not necessarily in the water supply, although their company has done so much for this community to evaluate and help us plan for the water supply impacts of the PFOS, but working closely with, started with the Hyannis Park Civic Association and other concerned residents near the Mill Creek area, the whole notion of any potential impacts and safeguarding the town from PFOS that is just in environmental areas, whether it be just in our groundwater, shellfish, that actually came up with a public comment just this evening. I don't know if you folks would hear that early under public comment, someone brought up shellfish and PFOS and all of these concerns. And so, at the last meeting, when we had that detailed presentation, both Nate and Lisa promised that they would come back this evening and give a small update on some of the work that they're doing, some of their initial, they've just, you know, started with this whole process. So, I really am thankful that you've made it out here, you know, in person, and I welcome you. And I guess I would turn it over to you, Lisa.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Stone. I'm with, oh, I'm sorry. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. Good evening. My name is Lisa Stone. I work with Kleinfelder. I've been with Kleinfelder for about three years, and I'm a project manager. I have over 25 years in the industry experience for site assessment.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name's Nathan Stevens. I'm a professional geologist with Kleinfelder, off and on now for about 25 years, and I'm serving in a technical capacity on this project.
And just to give everybody a little overview on Kleinfelder, Kleinfelder started in 1961, and since that time, we've got over 4,000 employees working out of over 100 offices throughout the United States, Canada, and Australia. And we've been working over 40 years for municipalities and private and public on the Cape.
So, as Bob alluded to, much of the work that we've done in this geographic area has dealt with municipal water supply. So, the treatment, the identification of where impacts come from, and ensuring that safe drinking water is available to various municipalities regardless of the source of contamination. We also, as a company, work on sites where PFOS compounds have been released. We've done work on military airfields, evaluation of firefighting foam releases, much as like what we're talking about adjacent to Yarmouth and Hyannis. We've also investigated publicly-owned treatment works, landfills, and a big area right now in the PFOS world is the application of biosolids or residues from publicly-owned treatment works that are spread on agricultural fields historically as fertilizer, but which contain these compounds. And finally, especially in Australia, we've worked on plating and coating facilities where metalworking and metal treatment serves as a, as a potential source of release for these So, PFOS in general, whenever these conversations come up, there's some necessary background, and everybody has slightly different details on what's involved. But the important thing to remember when evaluating these sorts of issues is that PFOS itself, these chemicals are very widespread. And they're widespread because they're useful. And because they're useful, they've been used in lots of products for the past 60 years. This includes things like waterproofing, weatherproofing, coatings, metal treatment for preparation and plating. And one of the largest, most sort of popular and highest visibility uses has been historical use in firefighting foams. And the reason that they were used in firefighting foams is because these chemicals are very stable under heat. They allow water to form a physical barrier in the form of a foam that can separate burning liquids from the heat source. It separates the fire from the fuel and helps you put the fire out in situations like airfields, vehicle accidents, that sort of thing. As with any product, of course, there can be health effects. And in the last 20 to 30 years or so, various adverse health effects with different PFOS compounds have been noted. Some of these include issues with fetal or neonatal development. There's evidence of liver damage in humans with exposures to high concentrations of different PFOS. There are apparent immune system, thyroid, and potential cholesterol level effects where having these compounds in your blood, which most people do because of their widespread use, can cause things like elevated cholesterol levels. And there's also recent, but what the scientific community characterizes as inconclusive evidence for different types of cancer. Understandably, a lot of the focus with evaluating the safety of these and other chemicals focuses on what happens to people potentially with exposure. There are also environmental effects. As Bob mentioned, our focus here is the fact that these chemicals are present in soil, groundwater, and surface water in the town. And the extent of those environmental effects is not fully known. And what I mean is, for most of these compounds, there isn't a standard, for instance, of what can be in the environment that won't cause an effect to an amphibian or a fish or an insect, simply because those studies haven't been completed to figure all of this out. And as was mentioned at the last meeting, I believe, PFOS, because of their chemical characteristics, aren't easily removed by the body. And so, over time, they can build up, and then you can have potentially these sorts of health effects. I mentioned that they're a family of compounds. Now, overall, depending on which literature source you look at, you have anywhere from 12,000 to 14,000 individual PFOS compounds, meaning chemicals that are made largely of carbon and fluorine. And they're different in how they're individually shaped, and they're different in the functional element that's on the one end of the molecule that gives them the properties that you want. But there are many, many ways to make that combination, and so you have a lot of individual chemicals that can be identified. The most recent information indicates that at least 4,700 different products, many of which are common, have been produced with one or more PFOS compounds or maybe still on the global market. You may have seen news recently of different jurisdictions, like the state of Maine actively working to outlaw the presence of any of these PFOS compounds in consumer products. You can't have them in plastic films, or you can't have them in stain guards for your furniture, that sort of thing. On the right-hand side is just sort of a graphical representation that's meant to sort of demonstrate that for this large family of compounds, the initial work done as early as the 70s and 80s had to do with two of them, PFOS and PFOA. These are both PFOS compounds with eight carbons, so they're eight-long is how we think of them, with different, different chemical ends to different effects. Drinking water regulations have now caught up and are starting to regulate six, or in some jurisdictions, seven of these compounds. And there is available from the commercial laboratories anywhere from 28 to 70 compounds on the list. So, right now, if you take a sample and you want to send it to a lab for PFOS analysis, they can identify about 70 of the 12,000 compounds, okay? So, what that means is that when we're evaluating the presence and distribution of these different compounds, especially away from the source, especially away from the release, we tend to pick up lots of them, right? We're going to pick up individual PFOS chemicals that are unrelated to anything that actually happened, okay? And that's been seen in some of the recent work, both at the airport and the firefighting training academy and area-wide sampling on the Cape, right? There are compounds that are there that aren't clearly attributable to A triple F use at the airport, for instance. So, our function, as Bob mentioned, we were involved with the town previously in terms of working on safe drinking water supplies, filtering these compounds from town drinking water. And our function in this particular role is that we're here as advocates and advisors for you and for the, for the community, right? The town is not what they call a potentially responsible party. As far as the state's concerned, this town didn't cause this problem. That may seem obvious, but it's an important distinction. Because the town is not the potentially responsible party, the town doesn't directly determine the course of the assessment or the cleanups, especially not in adjacent Hyannis. The other thing to keep in mind is that although there are many of these individual compounds, the regulations are behind the science, right? We know that there are 12,000. We can easily identify 70 of them. Massachusetts regulates six of them. And so, the PRPs, the, the parties who are investigating and cleaning up their problems are directly regulated on those six. Those are what they have standards for. Those are what they know how much to clean up. They, those are the ones that have concentrations that have been determined to not cause adverse health effects at some level. They've been able to assign that number. But as I said, your lab analyses are going to pick up more than what's regulated and fewer than what exists. The other thing to keep in mind as, as we evaluate what's been done at these other sites and how that may affect Yarmouth, is that while they're largely very stable, PFOS don't break down very easily, some of the longer ones do to a degree under environmental conditions, meaning, you know, room temperature and sunlight. And when they break down, they break into smaller PFOS parts. So, you can have a compound like a 62 fluoro telomere, which is a long compound, and as it moves through the environment after it's released, there are places in that molecule that can break, and we can identify some of those fragments, things like PFOA. We can see those in, in analyses. So, the determination of whether a given chemical in a place is attributable to a given release is also complicated by the fact that that chemical sort of changes its clothes as it moves away from the release, okay? Which is not unusual. There are lots of chemicals that do this. Chlorinated compounds from dry cleaners do the same thing. PCE degrades to TCE to DCE into vinyl fluoride, and finally to ethane. So, when we are brought in to evaluate what's been detected in Yarmouth, it's not a single one-to-one to say, we found this, for instance, in Mill Creek, therefore it's from the airport, right? It may not be. It may be from the firefighting training academy. There are even existing published, peer-reviewed studies that demonstrate that some of these PFOS compounds are present in precipitation, okay? So, they're in the rain. So, this sets up a number of gaps that we're trying to fill, right? We're trying to evaluate how critical these gaps are in understanding, again, what's coming into the town. So, as I said, all the PFOS do not have regulatory cleanup levels, which means you don't have to, it's difficult to be held to them under the state regulations. All the sources of PFOS that are already detected in groundwater in the area are not known, right? There are, there are compounds on the airport that likely aren't from the airport. They have moved with groundwater onto the airport. They may be moving beyond the airport. The other challenge is that each of the potentially responsible parties, so in this case, just to simplify it, let's just talk about the airport and the firefighting training academy, they are each responsible to assess and clean up their issue. So, one of the important things that we are currently going into detail on is, for instance, when the airport has a sample in a well of water and they say, well, these three PFOS are ours and these ain't or not, that is an understandable and proper attempt to limit their scope to what they are responsible for. But that leaves a downstream receptor like Yarmouth sort of in a bit of a lurch of, if it's not yours, then whose is it and who's going to go, go look for it? And there is always the fact that as you move away from where the samples are taken, and as you move through time, as the groundwater moves and carries these chemicals with it, and as the chemicals that may be in the soil may degrade and may, may slightly change form, there is never a situation where anybody doing this sort of work has 100% certainty. You've never taken every sample, right? At best, we're working with small percentages of what we're trying to evaluate. Everybody is, right? The folks at Horstley Wetton, the folks at GZA, and us are all doing the same, the same limited knowledge trying to understand what's going on. So, this is a cartoon essentially, and it's, and it's not dissimilar than what you saw from Soul Source Consulting on behalf of the Hyannis PFOS Community Working Group, which is that in the regulatory documents that have been submitted, there have been at least five or six different PFOS plumes identified. The Yarmouth-Hyannis Town Line is that vertical black thin line that crosses from the top right down to the bottom center and goes through the BFDA plume. The firefighting training academy has a plume. Its plume is largely characterized by one compound, PFOS, which was the major PFOS in the regulatory documents that have been submitted, there have been at least five or six different PFAS plumes identified. The Yarmouth-Hyannis Town Line is that vertical, black, thin line that crosses from the top right down to the bottom center and goes through the BFDA plume. The firefighting training academy has a plume. Its plume is largely characterized by one compound, PFOS, which was the major PFAS used in certain types of firefighting foam that were available from the 60s. The airport has two plumes, which they attribute to past incidences or training. Importantly, they characterize their AFFF as being a different formulation. So rather than the ECF type with the PFOS that the firefighting training academy had, they use what's called a fluorotelamer foam. Those foams were produced as a replacement for the PFOS foam. Then both cases have identified additional contaminants that they characterize as coming onto their properties from someplace up gradient, upstream in terms of groundwater, if you will. The largest of those, this unknown three that runs basically parallel to Iona Road, is actually two completely different plumes. There is PFAS compounds that are in groundwater samples that the airport, I believe, took, that the airport says are not part of their release. There's also a chemical called 1-4-dioxane, which is present at low levels in the same groundwater. And then the other two, the unknown one and unknown two, are simply cases where samples were taken at one or more wells. I think, in fact, unknown one was taken at a drinking water well, where the set of PFAS PFAS compounds that were identified was different than what the firefighting training academy sees where they have their spill, okay? The other two features, just to draw attention to, are the cap. There's actually two caps that were done on the airport to try to prevent leaching of PFAS compounds from the soil into the groundwater. There's been some discussion, I think that you saw last meeting, where a graph was shown saying that despite one of those caps, concentrations of one of the PFAS compounds continues to climb down gradient. And there are the MAR wells, a set of three former drinking water wells, or I guess drinking water wells again, that are under treatment, and that importantly are evaluated specifically by the airport, that their pumping captures the PFAS. All of the airport's plume, and, you know, some amount of the training academy's plume is now pulled into those wells because they pump the water out and cause the water to move towards it. Now, the key issue from Yarmouth's point of view is, do the MAR wells capture everything? Have they always captured everything? And is any of what came from one of these recognizable sources in the groundwater soil or surface water in Yarmouth? And so there was good work done previously, samples taken again by Soul Source, samples taken by the USGS, samples taken by the Silent Spring Institute, of surface water in Yarmouth, some of which identified PFAS, some of which identified the same individual PFAS compounds that the airport says are theirs, and the firefighting training academy say are theirs. Just because they find those two compounds doesn't mean that's where they came from, because those compounds can come from a number of sources. But when we looked through the file, we identified four primary issues. The first is that under the Massachusetts contingency plan, the regulations that govern the assessment and cleanup, if you have contaminants that move from groundwater to surface water or are likely to move from groundwater to surface water in a certain period of time, that represents what's called a condition of substantial release migration. And why that is potentially important is that if you, as a PRP, cleaning up your site, have this condition, you're still required to undertake what are called immediate response actions. Now, that matters because the airport specifically was doing their work under immediate response actions for quite a while, up until last year. And they said, "Well, now we've got our assessment complete. We know where everything is. We know what the risk is. We picked the best remedial technology, and we've implemented that remedial technology. Therefore, we go into operation and maintenance. We're no longer in an immediate response action, so we don't have to give updates every six months, and the period for public comment closed." So whereas before, the town had a mechanism to directly see drafts of the reports and comment on those drafts, that mechanism's taken away when you go into Phase 5. So if an IRA condition is still present, and if that case moves back into that condition, presumably the opportunity for direct public comment would be reopened. The second is that even though you have surface water benchmarks now in Massachusetts that are meant to be protective of ecological risks, because it's the Cape and you're in a Soul Source aquifer, you have one contiguous groundwater, you know, drinking water supply, and we already know that these spills are within multiple areas where pumping wells can capture these contaminants, our contention is that it would be appropriate to not delineate to the surface water standards, or benchmarks, but to delineate all the way down to the lower groundwater quality standards, the GW1. More importantly, in some ways, and based on the fact that, of the sampling that was done that I mentioned before by Soul Source, USGS, and Harvard, the fact that same compound was detected in surface water, as the airport claims is its tracer compound, they say, "This is the thing we take responsibility for the 6-2 FTS," which was present in surface water samples that were taken at concentrations that were quite high. The indication to us is that the delineation that they had done was not complete. They hadn't found all of it. And importantly, specifically for the airport, the idea that they modeled the activity of the MAR wells as being able to contain all this PFAS and keep it from crossing the border isn't substantiated during the period when the MAR wells were not pumping, or perhaps even with the MAR wells pumping, some of that 6-2 FTS is able to get beyond the wells into Yarmouth and show up in surface water. And finally, is the idea that, and this kind of goes for both of the PRPs, the training academy and the airport, if the contention is that they have contamination coming onto their properties from some up gradient source, there's a regulatory mechanism. There's a thing called a down gradient property status that they file with the state, and they say, "Here's our evidence that this is not ours, and that it's coming from somewhere else, and that hasn't been done yet." It's a lot of gloom and doom, but there is some good news. There's been recent progress. As the Select Board may know, there's a joint meeting that happens with several of the stakeholders for both sites, the consultants, the property owners themselves, DPW, I think, representation from the town of Yarmouth was at the last one. There's a work group that meets monthly that's helping to coordinate the work between these two PRPs because their problems overlap. The Hyannis PFAS Working Group and now Kleinfelter for the town of Yarmouth are also attending these meetings, and some of the concerns that we just showed, which have been brought up before, right? These things have been brought up by other parties at various times during the progress of these sites, is apparently being heard because there's a proposal currently to install additional monitoring wells, some new sampling points for groundwater in Yarmouth to hopefully identify which, if any, of these compounds are coming from the airport or from the firefighting training academy, and presumably may be shown to either be tied to or not tied to the surface water detections. There's also the permeable reactive barrier. So up at the firefighting training academy, they've taken an additional step to try to keep PFAS from leaving the property. Everybody's familiar with a Brita filter, like you put in your refrigerator? Well, it's full of activated carbon, which is carbon charcoal that's been treated to have a lot of pore space. Activated carbon is fantastic at causing PFAS to stick to it. And so they've injected a bunch of that into the ground at the boundary of the firefighting training academy to try to cut the head off and stop PFAS from leaving in the groundwater and moving off the property. Now, groundwater takes time to move, and so they've installed this barrier. If the barrier works, then what you'll see is clean water progressively moving away from the barrier, but what has already left will continue to move, driven by the MAR well and the natural gradients, et cetera, et cetera. So the firefighting training academy still has a public involvement plan, and due to the nature of the joint work between the two, the airport and the training academy, which we think is great, we think that that is a place to continue to provide public comment on both, you know, as best we can, make our comments apply to that working group and make sure that things are done in the right way. We would also advocate that the airport and the firefighting training academy should go sample surface water bodies in Yarmouth, and essentially, they should go and try to recreate the results that Soul Source and Harvard and USGS got over the last several years. And there is a need, because each PRP only looks at the compounds they have to look at, and because they further limit themselves by saying, "Only some of these compounds are us," but the results that they're getting have many more compounds in them, right? We look at six, we care about three, but our results have 70. We'd advocate continual, or continued evaluation of the full data set to try to understand whether or not these plumes truly are separated or can be separated, or are they intermingled, do they extend further than we know? It's always very, very difficult to take a molecule that we find in Mill Creek, again, and assign it to a given source. Hard to do in court, hard to do scientifically, right? So we look for a weight of evidence. We say, "Yeah, we had that molecule, but we also have these seven others that you don't report on, but you do have, so we think they're related to you." It's a weight of evidence approach. Our current plan is to continue to attend and participate in the joint meetings, again, try to make comments upfront to encourage them to be doing the right thing, provide this independent evaluation of the plume extents and potential sources, again, by looking at the full data set. We'll be submitting comments, recommendations to all the parties through that PIP plan, and continue to advise the town of Yarmouth directly, including, we basically have a written summation that we've prepared that's in draft now to be submitted to Bob next week or so, documenting, you know, these findings a little more formal way. And I've gone way too long, but thank you very much. I think that's it.
Mark, any questions?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for being here. For folks that are watching, you know, I'm very pleased that we brought you on to help us understand this and to assist us in advocating and helping us really, maybe put pressure, but make sure that we put adequate pressure on regulatory agencies to make sure that the proper studies are being done. DEP is sort of driving the train on this, and so I want to make sure that as a board, we weigh in with DEP soon and outline the additional sampling and recommendations that need to be pursued. This board went to town meeting last year, secured the funding to bring you onboard, and I think we have, from the very beginning, have had every intention to aggressively advocate for protecting the environmental and public health interests here in the town of Yarmouth. If you were to, if you go back to that previous, that depiction, that's the one showing the MAR wells and the various plumes?
Sorry?
That area right there. The MAR wells, to the east of that, that's Yarmouth conservation land. That's conservation property that we are responsible for protecting and taking care of. You know, one of the issues that I've raised in the past is just the excessive withdrawal of water from the MAR wells, which has had an adverse impact on that marshland. And that's an issue that, that's a separate issue, but it's one that we're not going to forget.
As a former conservation chair, I agree entirely.
Okay, well, that's good. That's good. Hopefully, I can get our conservation chair to say the same thing as you. And then obviously, the other thing that's very disturbing about all this is that we've identified fairly elevated levels in other samples significantly down gradient from the identified plumes.
Yes.
That suggests, at least based on the work from Tom Cambareri, that those, that hit is definitely attributed to the airport.
Yes.
Okay? So the information that we've been getting from the airport has not been truthful or accurate, all right? Massaged, however you want to couch it, we're being spun, all right? So we're not getting the straight scoop from our neighboring community, and that's why, another reason why it's important to have your expertise working with us on this. So from my point of view, my conclusion is, is that the only way we're going to get what we need to get is to put aggressive pressure on the Mass DEP. They're the ones that are driving the train. We've told the Hyannis Park Civic Association, they came here and presented to us that we agreed with their recommendations, and we're going to aggressively advocate for those recommendations. And after that meeting, we, as a board, wanted to have you here so that we can not only advocate for them, but to hear your recommendations and your suggestions so that we can put together fairly one very strong proposal to Mass DEP to advocate for, you know, taking action on this. So I'm anxious, I'm very interested in getting to that point where we have in front of us a proposal or a letter or something addressed to the Mass DEP outlining the very specific steps and measures that we need to have taken. So the sooner we get to that point, Madam Chair, the happier I will be. This is sort of long overdue. And I'm glad you pointed out in your presentation that PFAS comes, there's a lot we still need to know about this contamination. And even though we might want to point our finger at one or two sources, the reality is, there could be multiple sources.
Yeah, there almost certainly are.
Right. And given the rate of pumpage of the MAR wells, I would bet a lot of money that we're drawing in a lot of contamination from a variety of sources.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you note, you know, all the plumes are oriented in the same direction.
Yes, yes.
Between the topography, the actual drainage to the Mill Creek system, and the pumping of the wells.
This is the first time I've seen anything on a map suggesting that there are three other plumes out there that we know very little about.
Yep.
And I would like to think that Mass DEP is going to help drive the train in terms of making sure that we get better information on what's going on with those plumes.
Yeah, and that always becomes the situation in Massachusetts. We're lucky to have what's called a privatized program, where licensed site professionals individually undertake the work of assessment and remediation under the state rules.
Mm-hmm.
And in very limited situations, does the state order or tell or force anybody? Their mechanism is to take what is provided and audit it, and then come back and say, "This is deficient, that's deficient, this is deficient." And that's why we're couching our things in terms of, "Your regs say do this. We don't think they've done that," you know, that sort of thing, if that makes sense.
Well, I don't think I'm speaking out of term. If there are things that they should be doing that they're not doing, we want to know about it.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right? And the reality is, is that, so we're anxious, I'm anxious to weigh in, you know, as soon as we can.
Yep.
And lay out for Mass DEP what's next steps need to be done. And when do you think we could have something in front of us?
Again, we have that in draft, and we're looking to get that to you next week.
Okay, that's good. So this may be an item for our next meeting and our next agenda, perhaps. Okay, that's good. No, I appreciate all the work that you're putting into this. This is a very, very important issue for the folks here in town. One other question. Kurt Sears, who I refer to sometime as the sixth Select Board member. Kurt was here earlier, and in public statements, he had asked us a question, which I want to pose to you, and that is, among the recommendations, should we be thinking about shellfish sampling or some other type of sampling beyond groundwater that's downstream? He had specifically mentioned Mill Pond, that that might be an area where, I mean, we do have shellfish resources in and around that area. You can answer that tonight. If you don't have an answer tonight, you're going to have to have an answer for us at our next meeting when we revisit this.
Well, I can say that sampling of shellfish has been done. PFAS has been detected in shellfish tissue. That work is unrelated to this, obviously, right? So if that's a concern that the town has as a resource and potentially demonstrating that there's an impact to the resource, it's certainly doable.
Okay.
Again, it's not a, "My muscle has PFAS, therefore the airport," unfortunately, but...
No, I think our first priority needs to be protection of public health, all right? So that if we have a resource that could potentially impact public health, I think that has to be our first priority. I'm not particularly interested in pointing fingers, although at some point, we're going to be doing that.
Absolutely.
But the reality is, for now, I think our first priority has to be public health.
Yeah, we can review and include that as appropriate.
Yeah, I think that needs to be laid out there. Now, DEP may balk on some of these measures, but I think we'll have to take that up at a later time, but I think... I think in the meantime, I think we should be asking for all the reasonable recommendations that, that you've put on the table. And I'm sure you've looked at the Hyannis Park Civic Association recommendations, because we're going to really want to advocate for all of these recommendations, you know, when we revisit this, so.
Understood.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Joyce?
Oh, well, thank you for a very clear presentation. And thank you for having that little bit of hope at the end. One slide.
Progress is being made. It's not a, it's not a bad thing.
I especially loved the triangle illustration, because I thought that really hit at home about the different kinds of threats that are included. I consider it sort of like the anti-food pyramid.
Yeah, that's fair.
I have a question that's a little gross, but remember that we've been talking wastewater, wastewater, wastewater in this town. When I read about how we have PFAS within us...
It is in the wastewater.
...I mean, are we adding to the soil when we urinate? If we all have PFAS in us, are we adding PFAS?
Yeah, you have, you have PFAS being released into the environment, both from excretion, but also from consumer products, also from clothing residues. Septic systems are known, all septic systems essentially are known to have low levels of PFAS in them. Wastewater treatment plants are merely called out because in the act of separating the water from the solids, the PFAS tends to get concentrated in that residue. And that's why it has been identified as a problem, like with field application.
The gray water.
In the gray water, correct. Yeah, yeah. So when they separate those things, PFAS are all about interfaces. They want to be between the water and the soil, or between the water and the air, or between the water and your fat cells. So they find those interfaces and get concentrated in certain, by certain processes, if that makes sense.
So if one wanted to totally escape PFAS, there would not only be consumer products one would shed, but one would essentially have to live in a desert?
Yeah. I mean, again, it's in the rain. PFAS has been identified in precipitation in the Arctic at measurable levels. It's, it's everywhere. And again, it's everywhere. I don't mean to be a doomer, but it's, it's everywhere because of the stability of the compounds and how useful they've been, right? I mean, this is, again, when you have the plastic ketchup bottle and the ketchup slides out, it used to be because they lined them with PFAS compounds, right? Microwave popcorn bags, Gore-Tex, your stain guard on your sofa, your floor mats. It's everywhere. But what's not clear, and what's kind of a frustrating thing with these particular compounds, is we can detect them to very, very, very tiny levels. It is unclear, just because you can find it, whether or not it poses a risk or whether or not it poses harm, right? The identified health effects have been things like people who were manufacturing PFAS, or firefighters.
Big exposure, yeah.
Big exposures. Firefighters who were doing, you know, 15 times a year training because they ran an academy that trained other firefighters, you know, and they were bringing them in and testing the foam. Those, those are where we've seen clear health effects. And so between that and where we can detect, there's, there's a lot of space for still grappling with it, unlike some other compounds. We know lead's bad at X. We know benzene's bad at Y. We get that. But some of these PFAS compounds, it's unclear how much is a risk or is not a risk.
Thank you. And then back to Mark's concern about kind of what we do. Do you think there are any useful lessons from the base cleanup of, say, a decade ago of contaminants that would, that would help us figure out our program going forward?
I mean, potentially. And in fact, PFAS has been a concern at the base most recently. They, they sort of made great progress on the other plumes and then realized they now were required to look for this material and are finding it, you know, essentially over the entire, the entire footprint again.
Yeah, if I can add to that, having been involved in the cleanup quite extensively, there's a fairly massive PFAS plume on the southern end of the base. It's a plume that came from the old fire training area. And the Air Force is actually, I would have to say, the Air Force has done a very good job on the cleanup. And the permeable reactive wall that the fire training site is utilizing, that technology has been put into use out on the base. So we are learning here, Cape Cod has become a sort of a laboratory, an experiment station in terms of identifying these contaminants and also figuring out ways to clean them up. And in some respects, this permeable reactive wall that's being utilized at the fire training site, it's, we're going to learn a lot from that project as well. So this is an ongoing education, what's going on up there. We learn the lessons from the Air Force and their work up on, on the base. That information gets plowed into what the county's doing with the fire training site, and, and everybody's sort of watching. Around here, folks are watching very closely what everybody else is doing. And the, the lessons are, are very important.
And I do think that that's actually a very positive aspect of this particular situation, right? These different issues are not siloed. People are talking to one another. Data is being shared. You know, they, they are, I, I don't want to in any way imply that something was done wrong, right? I'm not here to say this consultant is terrible or that consultant's terrible. We are there to say, you haven't considered this. And I know why you haven't considered it, but we, we need you to consider, you know, this, this issue, if that makes, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Liz?
So Chris, I was wondering if we've had any feedback on blood testing. I know that that was when you and the Hyannis Park Association were here. There was an encouragement for Hyannis residents to get some testing done. And I, I bring that forward because i- if it should be a part of whatever letter we're about to compose to send off to DEP, should that be one of the components of that letter? So I don't know, Madam Chair, if we can ask Chris to give us feedback on that. Is that permissible?
Sure.
Thank you.
I didn't come here tonight to be a public speaker, but the, obviously, I'm a board member of the Hyannis Park Civic Association, and I'm your representative to the Airport Commission. And I think that in terms of questions for the blood work, that had come from Silent Spring and also from several other groups that had organized it for Hyannis. And I know that there's growing concern that, given the proximity and the kinds of things going on, that maybe we should be looking at town of Yarmouth and residents. And it could also be true for most everybody on the Cape, given a lot of what we're hearing. He's shaking his head, yes. And I think that's part of the issue. I was actually going to state that one of the things that I'm very pleased about with this kind of reporting and the work that people are doing now and are with our consultants, is that for the longest time, the airports sort of pointed fingers, excuse me, figures at the firefighting academy, and they've quoted at the airport. And, and the airport very proudly announced almost immediately, they were into phase five of their studies. Well, what's happened is a lot of that has been discredited, both through some of the work that's shown up even at Barnstable Town Council, and along with the work that, thank you, the hiring of the consultants here, to show that indeed it was far more complex, and that they've been very slow to respond to the kinds of requests that Yarmouth has made. And I think that what's also great concern is I know there's been a movement, oh, the airport should be moved or something. I think the bigger issue right now that we should be moving forward on, to tell you the truth, is to say absolutely no expansion of that runway 1533. While you have all these unresolved issues about where these plumes are coming from, what's underneath there, the fact that they're identifying more and more of this, and that we know from all of the research that's been done by a number of the consultants, that it is flowing here to us. And I think it's very significant that that one plume in particular follows the track of 1533. So you've got to wonder with all of the terminals, all of the aircraft and things that they've had there literally since, you know, the 1940s, you know, what, what else was going on there? It isn't just directly attributable to the fire, the fire academy and all. And so I think there's some further concerns. I also know that a lot of citizens are starting to talk about the fact that there are studies out there about the jet fuel emissions, and particularly from small planes. It's not from the big commercial ones. They're falling in the ground. And some of my neighbors for years have been talking about stuff they've been finding in their property, which tells me that's also going into a lot of our very valuable land. They're flying over Lewis Bay, they're flying over Mill Creek, they're flying over this whole area, and then even over, you know, Yarmouth Port and everything now. And they're very proudly, you know, announcing how much that air traffic is and how much they're doing. So I think there are a lot of environmental issues still that haven't been completed there that need to be looked at. There's some other airports around Hanscom, and I think even Logan did some of that research, that I think before any expansion goes further forward. And I'm very pleased to see that this is going on, because I think it adds more and more pressure to the airport, because they suddenly decided, oh, they could do a little more work for Yarmouth and the wells and everything, after they were confronted by the findings of consultants who've done a far more extensive work like Kleinfeldt has on, on the fact that, no, your reports are quite inadequate. So thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Any, any other items?
No, I, I do recall that we were concerned about not being able to write an effective letter to the DEP when we were having the presentation from Tom Cambareri, because we didn't have enough solid evidence. It sounds like that has, is starting to change. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you very much. I, I think it's important, what Mark was talking about, that the sooner rather than, you know, later, that we can get going on this, the better. Because every day, more of it's coming out. And we really, I'm concerned when you hear things of, you know, that the public comments sections on certain items have been closed, when actually they shouldn't have been closed yet without definitive information. And hopefully this will reopen that and get DEP to start working on a such, on a resolution of the situation for us. So I thank you very much. We look forward to your report. And it's going to be on our agenda for the next meeting that we have, which will be May 6th.
May 6th, okay.
Yay!
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great report.
Very good.
Okay, Mary. We have discussion and vote on the annual town election warrant and designation of police assignments to the police chief and the town clerk. Mary, you provided us with a memo regarding this, and also within your memo is proposed motions.
Good evening, Mary Meslaski, town clerk. You are correct. There are two of the standard motions that we take for every single election. The first is the assignment of the police officers, and the second is to vote the ballot warrant.
So I would ask, do we have a...
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Mm-hmm.
I hereby move that the select board hereby delegates its authority, given under Chapter 92, Section 72 of the Acts of 2022, to detail a sufficient number of police officers or constables for each building that contains the polling addresses for one or more precincts at every election therein, to preserve order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from interference where their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws related to the elections, to the police chief in consultation with the town clerk.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second, what he said.
Okay. And do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's a voice unanimous.
Madam Chair, I have another motion to make.
Mm-hmm.
I move that the select board adopt the warrant for May 20th, 2025, annual town election, as presented by the town clerk, and direct that the warrant be duly advertised and posted in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, the town of Yarmouth charter, and its bylaws.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, moving on to the next item that we have on the agenda is the town meeting preview. I'll turn this over to Bob.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is our annual town meeting preview. Now, the, the purpose of this meeting this evening is to take a run through the annual town meeting warrant, to share information with the public on what the major issues and topics that we're going to see at the upcoming town meeting, which will be held April 29, 2025, 6:00 p.m. And we're going to be at the DY Intermediate School on Station Avenue. And now, this review is not as detailed of a discussion as we'll hold at the town meeting. For instance, we're still working on some of the motions and, and those issues, but we'll be able to walk through, so everyone knows what the substance of every article is. And hopefully, folks have questions, they can ask those questions. And I, I really want to thank all of the people that have worked so hard on, on putting this together. I know we have department heads here. Jen Mullen, our finance director, has just been a rock star on our town meeting warrant. And a guy who really needs a lot of credit is Bill Scott, who has put together... We, we won't be able to cover every single one of these, but the town meeting presentation materials is over 100 slides that provide various detailed information, so that when we get to town meeting, this has really helped us facilitate that open, transparent sharing of information. So with that, I thought what we would do is, is walk right through, so everyone knows what each article is, the substance, and then we can have any discussion that people would like, or comments that board members would make.
Vita, I see your hand up, but we're going to wait for you to get, when we get to a particular article that you have a question on, if you would, I, I will recognize you at that point. So if you don't raise your hand until you actually have a question on a specific article, you've got your hand up now. There you go. Good job. Okay, Bob.
And we'll jump right in. And we're going to start off with Article One. And Article One references budget adjustments. These are not for the next year, but shortfalls that appear in the current fiscal year's budget. And the only shortfall that we presently have is approximately $70,000 to supplement the snow and ice budget. And even though we didn't have a lot of inches of snow, this was a very cold winter. And I know the DPW spent a great deal of time sanding, salting. There was a couple of storms that we had that was some significant plowing. And keep in mind that the town does not put a very liberal amount in this article every year. And the, the reason for not having the budget very liberal in terms of how much money we set aside for snow and ice is that there is a special state law, and the only article or budget item that it applies to, and it allows deficit spending in snow and ice only if the community appropriates the amount of money that it appropriated in the previous year. So in order to preserve the ability to handle those very tough years, we keep it at the same appropriation amount, which sometimes on tough years, it runs a little short. On, on good years, it's, it's enough. But if we increased it so that we'd have definitely more than we needed, then we may risk in the future losing that ability to deficit spend under the state law. So there, there is some reasoning behind why we have a fairly conservative estimate, but it's pretty realistic. And being off by 70,000 is, you know, not a lot in terms of the overall scope of the operation. So that, those are the total budget adjustments. And for a budget that's over 100 million, it's, it's good to see us, you know, it shows a lot of discipline to live within that.
Bob, Vita has her hand up on Article One. Go ahead, Vita. What's your question?
It's not my question. It's a, oh, can you hear me?
I can indeed.
Okay. It's not a question. It's, it says, select board vote is six to zero. I, I think the last time I counted, there are only five of you.
You are absolutely right.
Right, that's on the slide. And, and in the book, I'll read from the budget. This is the book that we hand out at town meeting. And it, it has the, the votes. And the select board actually recommended this article five to zero, and it was the finance committee that recommended it six to zero. So good catch there.
Okay, thanks, Vita. Moving on to Article Two.
And Article Two represents the omnibus budget for the town. So these are all of the general fund town budgets. And when we get to town meeting, we'll have with the moderator run right through each budget, have questions and, and approve it. And the total in the municipal operations budget that we have under this article is a grand total of 51 million. So it represents about maybe half the town's budget. a grand total of 51 million, so it represents about maybe half the town's budget, a little bit less than that under Article 2.
So, what we've done before, I believe, with the town moderator is that we take sections of the budget, and then if anyone has a hold on that particular section for a question, he'll hold that item. Otherwise, we move on to the next. Isn't that correct?
Exactly. And this gives a chance for any questions on any of the operating budgets that are under the general fund in Article 2. And what we'll see as the construction of the warrant, the way the town budget is constructed is that there is not one budget article, but there's approximately eight or so that break out individual sections of the town budget. And we're going to go through each one of those, and you'll see how they all come together, and it's largely dependent on the source of the funding. And Article 2 represents the general fund budget. And when we get to the next article, Article 3, that is a special article that has been placed on for the new fire department staffing that will be subject to the override vote. And the reason for that is that the town meeting vote is going to set aside funds to add four additional firefighters and a supervisor, and also, the restructuring of the wage scale for FY '26 in the fire department. And those amounts required for that additional personnel is over what the amounts under Prop 2.5 allow. So, the funds for the fire department staffing are going to be appropriated, subject to the passage of a Proposition 2.5 override that is, appears on the general ballot. And in order to separate these out, where it is a conditional appropriation, in the event that the override does not pass, these amounts here, you know, will not be part of the budget, so we will not require another town meeting to cut the budget. So, that separates it out. And I know we've got the fire department here, if there's any questions on that.
I don't see any from the public. Moving on to Article.
Article 4. And this is where we see some of the structure of the budget, that we take independent funding sources that represent operating budgets, and they're separated out from the general fund budget, which is largely from taxation. And Article 4 begins a series of these with the golf enterprise budget. And again, the golf budget is separate from the vote we take in Article 2, because 100% of the funding for the golf department comes directly from the revenues from the golf enterprise fund. So, each one of the individual enterprise funds are acted on separately, and the total golf funding is 5,541,000, and that is going to be raised by the fees for playing golf.
Okay, moving on then to Article 6. I see no questions.
And five is.
Five, I'm sorry.
Similarly, the water division budget presents the complete budget for the water department with all of the funds, 100% of the funds, coming from the fees for water. So, the water service fees go directly into funding, so that's a separate article, but together, each one of these items comprise the overall town budget. And then, when we move to Article 6, again, that's another enterprise budget, that is the septic. And this is the amount of money that operates the town's septic plant. And that total is 3,198,000, and 100% of that budget comes from the fees for the septic. When people have their septic tanks pumped, and it's delivered to the septicage facility, there's a charge, and that pays for this budget.
Article 7?
Article 7 is the wastewater enterprise budget. And again, the, before, all of the, all of the costs here are coming from the wastewater enterprise fund. And it's important to note that, obviously, we don't have the wastewater treatment plant operating yet. So, the amount of money in the enterprise fund, we've placed there as part of our pre-funding program for wastewater. So, this, these are all programmed expenses that will enable us to get that wastewater treatment plant up and running. And in the future, it'll be a much larger budget, but 100% of these costs come from the wastewater enterprise fund. And the.
Okay, Article 8?
Article 8 is the cable television communications budget, and this funds all of our programming of the town meetings and the communication budget, and the operation of our cable television system that we have for the public educational and government programming that we do. And it is funded 100% from the cable TV contract, has the fees for the public access, and that funds the communications department.
And we have Article 9?
And Article 9 moves directly into the Dennis-Yarmouth Regional School District budget, and we have the certified amount of 44,865,765, which is within the guideline, budget guidelines that we agreed upon for the school, and so, this year, we don't need any overrides for that. And.
Okay, we have a question from Vita on Article 9.
Yeah, I was wondering, considering that there were so many new students in the Yarmouth part of the district and stuff like that, how did they come in where, you know, their budget doesn't surpass the 2.5% increase? Can you, does anybody know about that at all?
Yes, and the reason is that the enrollment is frozen as of October 1, 2024. So, at that point in time, that's the enrollment that's used to calculate the shares. And one of the issues that I think helped Dennis-Yarmouth, helped Yarmouth a little bit this year, is the overall, that part of the formula is the students, and part of it is, they calculate what the growth in revenues in the two individual towns are. And last year, the overall growth in revenues in Dennis was slightly larger than the overall growth of revenues in Yarmouth. And that led to a slightly larger assessment for Dennis, and a little bit less for Yarmouth, which didn't make the assessment go down, but it helped keep it within the levels that we can fund within Prop 2.5.
Did I answer your question, Vita?
Not exactly, but I may ask the district people to explain that, so we can move on, okay?
Okay, Article 10?
Article 10 is the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District budget, and that comes in at 3.832 million. And again, that is also within the guidelines that we had established for the educational budget, and does not require any extra funding. And with that, those 10 articles, well, actually, the nine, because it goes 2 through 10, those together comprise the operating budgets. And as you can see, the town meeting warrant is broken up into sections. At first, we do all the operating budgets, and that takes us through Article 10. And what we're going to see is, the next series of articles is still financed, but these are the capital articles. And in our financial structure, the operating budget is separated out from the capital. And that way, you know, we keep a better track of all of the capital needs and the personnel needs. And so, when we roll into it, we start with Article 11, and it's very similar to the way we do the budget. It's broken up in separate articles by the funding source. So, Article 11 is the capital expenses for the golf division, and 100% of those are derived from the golf revenues directly, and it's a total of 245,000.
Article 12?
Article 12 is a major project for the septic enterprise fund, and it is a bonding amount for $4,400,000 for the purpose of doing rehabilitation to the equalization tank at the septic facility. And just to gross everyone out a little, that equalization tank is the vessel that holds all of the raw sewage. And that raw sewage is obviously a very corrosive material, and over time, it literally breaks down the integrity of the concrete in the tank, and it requires rehabilitation. And Jeff Colby taught me that, so that's why I know it.
You get an A on that one. Article 13?
Article 13 is the capital expenses for the water division totaling $1.3 million, again, all from water fees.
And Article 14?
And Article 14 is, this is for the water department, and it is another capital improvement bonding. And it is for the amount of $5,050,000 for, again, we had this discussion of the PFAS, and this PFAS is directly geared towards assist, creating a system to treat PFAS in our water, public water supply wells, Number 10 and Number 11. And those will safeguard those water supplies and allow us to use them in the future.
Article 14?
And Article, that's.
I'm sorry, Article 15.
Article 15 is another bonding for the water department, and this is a supplemental funding to an existing program to replace water mains in Route 28 in conjunction with the wastewater project. Now, we've appropriated $15.6 million to date for that purpose. And the design and bidding has indicated an additional $2 million is required to complete that work as we do the wastewater. It's very important that we get those water mains done at the time that the road is dug up for the wastewater, because we do not want to come back. And so, this supplements the 15, so we're going to be putting a total of $17,600,000 of water mains in Route 28 to update those as we do the wastewater infrastructure.
Article 16?
Article 16 is police cruiser financing. Now, this is a four-year municipal lease to acquire police cruisers, and this is part of our capital improvement program that helps us equalize the cost annually of the cruisers. This four-year finance program, we own the cars at the end of it, and these are hybrid vehicles, too, that we hope to get, so they'll be energy efficient.
Article 17?
And Article 17 is the fire department capital expense, and that comes from the fire department ambulance revenues totaling 347,000.
Article 18?
Now, Article 18 is a major capital for the fire department, at least in terms of the equipment, and it is for the purchase of what is called a quint pumper. And I hope we get a chance at town meeting to talk about this a little bit. I really want to salute the department for coming up with a very innovative solution to a problem that the fire ladder truck that we have has pretty much timed out. They only last so long, and they're extraordinarily expensive, and we needed an update to the ladder truck, but we also needed an update to the engine. And the department has located this newer type of a vehicle that's called a quint pumper that combines the elements of a ladder truck and an engine for less money than the old ladder trucks cost on their own. And this is a way, I think, to very efficiently meet the needs of the department. And, you know, it is also much more nimble than those old big ladders. These things can get anywhere, and I think that thanks go to the department for coming up with that solution.
Article 19?
Article 19 is the, we call this the omnibus capital article. This is the capital expenses for the various general government departments, and they're listed there. There's a total of 4.6 million. And out of that 4.6 million, there is 3.5 million from free cash, but there's also a $1.1 million override that we've restored to the budget for highway maintenance to go along with an additional 250,000 for stormwater.
Vita has a question on this.
Yes, and I just lost, what number is the roof replacement over the town hall? Whatever.
That's number, that's item number 15.
Okay, and it's $200,000?
That's correct.
And is that the total cost for the replacement of the roof?
Yes.
Okay, so, the solar panels are coming down, right?
Yes, temporarily.
Oh, hold on a minute.
So, they go back up? They don't go away?
No, 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 no. That was, I was just using an expression for keeping the, replacing the panels back on the new roof. You know, those panels are almost 20 years old now. And for one thing, I want somebody to go back and give me information on when it was that we finally, you know, that the savings finally kicked in. Because I spoke with the late George Alair, exactly five years after the installation of those panels, in 2013, shortly before his death. And the person who kept pushing and pushing for the solar panels on the roof kept assuring us that the cost, which was $50,000, if I remember correctly, that in two years' time, all of that would be paid for, and everything else was gravy after that. Well, after two years, mind you. Now, I was speaking with George Alair five years later, and the total savings at that point had been $15,000. So, I would like for somebody to tell me, when did we finally get to the point where it became gravy? And secondly, I think, considering that, as I said, the useful life of the solar panels is about 20 years, 20, maybe 25 at most. And for you to then proceed to put those panels, those solar panels back on this new roof, I think would be very seriously, you know, forethought thinking to me. I just honestly, I need some of this information, and I hope you will consider this once again, as I said, because the panels have, first, and secondly, I understand that nobody knows what to do with the solar panels, that if somebody decides that finally, yeah, these are finished with their useful life, and what you do with it, nobody seems to know at all. Is there anybody who does? Because as far as I know, nobody seems to know. And just for that reason, to replace them back on the roof, the new roof, I would be absolutely out of the question, I would say.
I think Liz may have some answers for you.
Hi, Vita.
Oh, God.
Not God, just Liz. I was involved with that installation with Peter, I can't remember his name right now, but he was inaccurate with a two-year payback.
George, stop.
Sorry?
No, George.
No, it was Peter, it was, no, Peter Johnson stopped.
Peter Johnson stopped, probably. That's another.
So, at any rate, they, it has well-paid for itself. The panels are, those are older panels, they are warranted for 20 years. The classic story that I like to tell about how the length of, the long life length of solar panels is Carter, President Carter, put a solar field of solar panels behind a high school in Newburyport. They're still producing energy. So, solar panels, putting them back on, and, yeah, it makes perfect sense. They are definitely producing power and saving the town money. I know Robie Whitehouse had put together some facts about how much it was saving. Those facts do exist, and we can dig them up if you really need them, but that's.
I absolutely want to know when the savings started kicking in.
I would say back then, it was probably.
Because George Alair was the head of DPW at the time that he was giving me those figures.
There was a wonderful grant that was given to the town by the Massachusetts Technology Collaborative back then. So, it was not an expensive installation, and it paid itself back, certainly within 10 years.
No, no, I don't want you guessing. I want some real numbers here.
We'll look it up.
Just exactly when the savings started kicking in. That is not the only place where it's a little difficult to figure out what kind of benefit we're getting for some of those, even the race in the school district and what have you.
We'd be happy to know. We have a grant later that we'll discuss where we can give you those costs and the savings very, very easily with the help of a consultant.
Consultant?
Vita, we'll get, we'll get you your answer.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Do you have any other questions on Article 19? That's it, Vida? On 19?
That's it.
Okay, Article 20?
And Article 20 is an ever-source easement for the Water Resource Recovery Facility on 99 Buck Island Road. So they need an easement to the electric company to provide power to that facility. So that is Article 20.
And 21?
Article 21 are wage adjustments set aside for the settlement of collective bargaining agreements and for non-union personnel that are ongoing, so they're not part of the budget, which just has the actual figures in it.
Article 22?
And Article 22 is some stabilization financing. And we've had free cash, positive balances, which have been good. And this article takes $2 million from the free cash account and transfers $1 million into our capital stabilization fund for future capital expenses of the town. And it transfers $1 million to the wastewater stabilization fund to fund future wastewater costs. And these are the important rainy day funds for the town that we're continuing to replenish.
Okay, now we're coming up to the capital replace, I mean, sorry, the Community Preservation Act, articles, starting with Article 23?
Right now, we have a series of the CPA. And the first of the articles just establishes the various sections that you're required to fund for community preservation, which include reserves for affordable housing, open space, historic preservation and administrative costs. And the subsequent articles actually fund projects from those amounts.
So Article 24?
So Article 24 details the affordable housing projects for community preservation. And there are two projects totaling $660,000, including Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, which we have.
Article 25?
And Article 25 are the recreation projects for the community preservation program totaling $1,082,000.
Article 26?
And Article 26 are the historical preservation projects for the community preservation. And those total $872,133.
Article 27?
Article 27 is for a reserve for open space, which places $215,396 into reserve for future open space purchases.
Okay, and Article 20-
Article 28, that is a housekeeping item to take. Folks, remember, before we had the community preservation, it was called land bank. And there was an old article that had taken funds and appropriated those for legal costs for the land bank. And lo and behold, our finance folks found there's $33,587 left in the old legal account for the land bank. And those are being transferred into the purposes for the modern Community Preservation Act. So that's a cleanup.
Article 29?
And Article 29 are the appropriations from the Tourism Revenue Preservation Fund totaling
Article 30?
And Article 30 is the Town Common Feasibility Study in the amount of $100,000. And we have some very nice slides on that.
Okay, I'm sure we'll enjoy them at town meeting. Article 31?
Article 31 is a property disposition of a remnant parcel at Zero Oak Bluffs Road. And that is 0.07 acre sliver of town-owned property that we held a bid for. And the neighbors bid on that, so that will be transferred to the neighboring residential property to simply, it's not buildable or anything, it'll augment a single-family home property and have a very tiny impact on new taxes for the town.
Article 32?
Article 32 is for additional costs of $200,000 for ongoing Matickey building maintenance.
Vida, did you have a question?
No, just a comment.
Okay. Sorry, keep going.
Article 33 is the petition for special legislation relative to the Division of Natural Resources Officers, which, as a result of the Police Officer Safety Training Act, all of our natural resource officers now undergo the exact same academy training, firearm training, all of the requirements of a regular police officer. And in recognition of that new, and they are required to be certified Massachusetts police officers, this seeks to transfer them into the same retirement system as other police officers. And that requires special legislation under Article 33.
And our final article, Article 34?
And Article 34 grants a cost of living increase annually to those veterans who receive an exemption of their property taxes under Mass. general laws.
And that concludes our meeting preview. Any final questions before we move on to our next agenda topic? Well, thank you all very much. Thank you, Vida, for your questions. We're moving on now to assignment and motions. And I have a question. With the passing of Gary Ellis at CPA, and I noticed that we have the resignation of Christine as the vice chair, is CPA planning on presenting their articles to town meeting? Or should we be assigning those to the select board?
I would ask Karen, because she's the expert.
I think CPC is, I mean, Christine's not, I think Christine's resignation is effective after town meeting. So she was planning on coming to town meeting and participating. The committee has discussed the different articles and assignments, so they're poised and ready to do it. I know we've switched over the last couple of years, but they're ready and game.
Okay, thank you, Karen. In that case, then, we've got, if I read it correctly, about six articles each for the board. We take our 30 articles and split it up among us. And so what you all have in your packet is a warrant article list, which kind of just lists all the articles. And I'm going to start with Article 1. If there's a, there are different ways that we could do this. In the past, sometimes what we've done is, as the select board goes along, one takes one to six, next one takes seven to, you know, or do you want to have specific articles? Would you prefer having specific articles first that you'd like to be able to present? And I bring up on that that Mark probably is going to want to do the town common.
Well, I'm happy to speak on any of the articles that deal with wastewater or PFAS treatment. You know, I'm, obviously, I'm very familiar with those projects. But in the sake of simplicity, you said we each, we're going to get six, right? I'm happy to take the last six. Just take them right off the table. I can handle those. So from 28, although 28 is going to be CPC.
There's six of them, 29 to 34.
29 to 34, then, I'll take those.
Okay.
So I'll take those last ones.
Okay. Okay.
Need to take the proceeding?
Joyce? Do you want to take? Okay, if we go, that would be starting at 22 going back.
Through 28, maybe that, I think that might be seven.
That's the CPC, so we're going the other way.
Three.
Start at 22 and work back.
22 back, is what we're saying.
Oh, back, okay.
Are we missing one, then?
Okay, so 17 through 22?
That's you.
That's you.
Oh, I see.
Liz?
And who's taking 23 through 28?
Those will be done by CPA themselves, CPC.
I was doing that, too.
Oh, okay. And then Joyce? So, yeah. Gulf capital expense down through police cruiser financing. 16, 11 through 16.
Okay. And then Tracy would be taking the schools, which would be 10, 9, 8.
Five through 10?
Right. And I'll take the first four.
You're getting a short shift.
That's all right.
She works hard. We have to give her a little stretch here.
Budget's tough. That's the one you're going to do a lot of reading on. It's, that's the, the worst one to get is Article 2, because that's the only one with a real long motion.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you all very much. We have our motion assignments. And we have discussion and vote of the Municipal Energy Manager Grant Award. I'll leave that to Bob and Liz.
Well, we're delighted that, you know, we had, the board had voted to approve the grant application for the Mass. Save to get the Municipal Energy Manager Grant. And we've received word that we have been awarded a grant for $45,600 for the 2025 to 2027. So that's like that same amount for three years to fund a municipal energy manager. And I guess with their funding, they're looking for us to do, instead of a full-time position, a part-time position. So our recommendation is that they need to know whether we accept the grant. I think we accept it and hopefully we can leverage that into getting some more grants and saving a lot of money for the town.
So do we need a motion to accept the grant?
I think so. That, because you approved getting the application in, let's keep it all together.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, so moved, Madam Chair. I move that we accept the grant.
Can we have a second? Do we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's a voice unanimous.
Thank you, Liz.
Congratulations to Liz.
Here you go.
Good job.
Okay, moving on to the next item, we have Board and Committee Action, starting with resignation. Is that going to be Hugh?
That's Liz.
Hugh, Liz?
Oh, okay. I have it. Oh, this is my appointment. No, I have to do the resignation.
Resignation?
Is that the resignation? No, that's not. Well, that says Peterson. Just read her letter. Sorry. I know I have it here. Chris, here it is.
Here you go.
I got it.
Got it?
So, and I'm not sure if this is, read the letter or just?
I don't, I think just, just her resignation and the dates.
Okay, so I have Christine Marzigliano is resigning from the CPA. She will continue on through the end of this round of CPA applications and the meeting to discuss the CPA applications at Springtown Meeting and probably one more CPA meeting. And then assisting in choosing a new chair and vice chair. So she says she would resign April 30.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we accept the resignation with great appreciation from Christine on the effective date of April 30.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would note that she wants to stay as president of the Yarmouth Conservation Trust.
Okay, well, we don't have to act on that.
No, no action on that, but.
Okay, and then we have a request to dissolve the Library Planning Committee. This is, since we're actually going to be setting up a library building committee, this becomes housekeeping for us to.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, okay, voice unanimous. And then we have the Library Building Committee, and I believe that's Joyce.
I'd like to propose-
One sec. Mark, can we have you put into your motion that you also add the Library Ad Hoc Committee?
So moved, yes.
Okay, with a second, Joyce, you're fine with that?
I'm fine.
You're fine with that? Okay, no changes in the vote? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Bill? So moving on to the Library Building Committee?
Madam Chair, would you like me to do them individually or would you like me to do them as a clump? I remember that there was a real concern in looking at them as a group for balance of skills.
It looks like you've got that.
You have it all listed right here for us. Why don't you do it as a group?
Okay. I propose for appointments on the Library Building Committee, Ellie Tierney, construction; Tom Pendleton, South Yarmouth library user; Judy Tarver, construction; representative, oh, sorry, Vicki Giannettos, West Yarmouth library user; Dorcas McGurran, Select Board Representative; Sandy Fife, Capital Budget Committee Rep; Susan Britta, Planning Board Rep; Mindy Harrington, Library Staff; and Joseph LeBrecq, Library Staff.
So, Madam Chair, I move that we appoint all of these individuals to this committee.
What's their term?
It would be for the length of the project.
As slug as it takes.
Right.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's a voice unanimous.
Okay, and then I move that we appoint Chris Peterson as an alternate to the Recreation Commission. And I have written him up. He's coached multiple sports. He still is, plays hockey. He has active, he has four children, age four through 11. And as he says, "I'm eager to bring my leadership program development and community engagement to help enhance the state recreational opportunities for residents of all ages." Terrific candidate.
Okay, do I have a-
For one year.
I approve that we appoint Mr. Peterson as an alternate to the Recreation-
You're making a motion?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second on the motion? Okay, all in favor? Aye, opposed? That's a voice unanimous.
An admiration for somebody who can take on new responsibilities with four people that y'all get home.
With the minutes for the March 26, 2024, we started discussion of this at the previous meeting. I'm assuming that all the changes that were noted have been made. And we are doing this as a vote of necessity, again, because of the current board setup versus the board that was in, at that time. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes for March 26?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we're also looking at the minutes for December 17, 2024.
So moved.
And we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Voice unanimous? Okay, upcoming agenda review, we just added Kleinfelder to the March 6.
May 6?
May 6, I'm sorry. I'm still on the minutes. And we have hearing for the Yarmouth Tourism Destination Marketing District. And the first of the hearing fees. And we have the local comprehensive plan update and a recap of annual town meeting. And then we're also going to be having the town administrator evaluation. Anything, anyone wants to add to that agenda?
No.
Now, Madam Chair, what I'd like to talk a little bit about is to make sure that on this tourism district, you know, we have ample information in our packets about that particular proposal. For example, and I think we're going to need someone's help and maybe it's yours, Bob, in terms of making sure that all of the various criteria are identified. I want to make sure that when we get into this that we've got, and it might be helpful to have this before, well before the date of the meeting, sort of a checklist on all of the items that need to be together in, in order for there to be a complete proposal for us to vote on. So I know, for example, that this district, I believe, is it a Yarmouth Tourism Destinate? Or is it a, I thought they were in the process of creating a Capewide district and they needed to identify a number of towns to be a part of that. That was my understanding. But when I see this as the Yarmouth Tourism Destination Marketing-
Yeah, no, they changed it. When they first came, like, a year ago or year and a half ago, they were going to do it Capewide. And then they decided that it was going to be too hard, so they're picking a couple of towns. And then they, they decided that it was going to be too hard, so they're picking a couple of towns. And I think, I don't know if they've got any other towns approved, but they're going Yarmouth only for this proposal.
That's what I recall as well.
I think that they were going to do Barnstable too.
No, my, yeah, my understanding is they were, this was supposed to be a Cape marketing district with a multitude of communities involved in it. That was my understanding.
Well, that's, needs to be-
Yeah, I think we need to-
What he said when he came in here, wasn't what he said when he came to your meeting.
Oh, it wasn't? He had basically-
He said that they canned the idea of having it Capewide and then, and they were just going to take a few of the towns and he said he was going to start with Barnstable and Yarmouth.
Okay. Yeah, but I still think we need a checklist in terms of making sure, because I think all of the businesses that are participating, meaning the fairly large number of hotels need to sign up in order for it to happen. So there needs to be some evidence that that exists, right?
Right, but, you know, I will tell you, it's been a bear. We're working on that now, even determining what the actual requirements are. The whole thing is, you know, part of that legislation that's only two years old. So it's only been done in Cambridge or Boston so far. We're the guinea pigs and, you know, the Department of Revenue is responsible for administering the whole program. And there's no one up there you can even ask a question to because they don't even know. And the one thing that we're trying to figure out is there's no, we have the surveys, not the surveys, the petitions. But, but there's no way to certify the signatures on the petitions. So apparently, it's, you know, it's not like a regular petition that we certify that such and such a person is a registered voter at such and such address. You know, these are all just people representing these corporations that, you know, we don't know what their job is, whether they had a vote of the corporation. And, and we're not, we're not able to certify any of those corporate votes or anything. So, you know, there's a question about, you know, some of the procedures, but we have the statute. We have all of the things that says that they're required to do.
But wouldn't we need to have, I mean, in order to know that they're meeting the criteria, don't we have like, I'm just going to give an example, that if there was a Marriott hotel in town, that we'd need a letter from the Marriott Corporation that John Smith has been given permission to speak for the Marriott.
The town clerk has been researching that topic with legal counsel?
I think she's got her hand raised. In fact, she may be trying to speak to this.
Mary, are you with us?
Yeah. She's been doing a lot of work on this.
You have to unmute yourself, Mary.
Or she may need someone to unmute.
I can hear you now.
So, sorry, I wouldn't have stayed downstairs had I realized this was coming up. We've sent, we've done the best that we could as far as doing kind of corporate due diligence to figure out what entities are typically involved in those, in those particular hotels. The way the plan has been sent in for you folks is that it is only 12 hotels within the town of Yarmouth and they are creating a class of hotels and motels that have 85 or more hotel rooms. So that's essentially the 12 members. We erred on the side of caution and sent some to a couple of additional hotels. One that was on a petition but didn't meet the criteria. And one that, particularly the 452, I believe, is, used to be the Town and Country Motor Lodge. We've sent information to all of their contacts that we could find through the corporate records and through our assessors database records. And I'm waiting for some information back from the Director of the Bureau of Accounts at Department of Revenue. She was at a meeting I was at this week and she is going to do a deep dive and try and get us the information that we need so that we can figure out what information we can rely on to make sure that we know what the 62% is, what the 100% is, to be able to determine what the 62% is. The interesting thing with 452 and the former Town and Country Motor Lodge is that it's currently not operating as a motel. It's 100% employee occupancy, but that's only part-time. So, so there's been a lot of
Wow.
dives looking into information to try and figure out what we're using for a baseline. And, you know, as soon as we have the information, we'll get it to you folks through Bob.
Yeah, I think it would be-
Mary, do you feel comfortable that you'll have that for our May 6 meeting?
I really, I'm not at this point. What I did when we sent out the notices was include a cover letter and saying that, you know, identifying who the person was that had signed the petition and requesting if that person was authorized to represent any of the corporate entities. So, you know, hopefully they will, but, you know, if you were just looking at it, it seems like some people were, may have been owners or shareholders and some people may have just been area general managers. So, those petitions are, will be sent to the Department of Revenue this week as soon as we find out to whom they need to go. And as soon as we can find out more of the baseline information to determine that 62%, you know, we will. But at this point, it's, it's a matter of-
It's a work in progress, it sounds like.
A work in progress and it's waiting for information from the Department of Revenue to kind of give us some guidance.
So we're saying that it's-
There's no, the only other one that exists is Boston and Cambridge, so they're still looking up information as well.
Okay, so tentatively then, we have it on for May 6th. But we may be pushing it back, but we still need information.
Right, we still need, I think, a checklist so that we know when we walk into that hearing, all of the, all of the various items that are associated with a district have been checked off and there's been sufficient due diligence on each of the items. Because we've never done this before.
No, nobody else has.
And I'm glad to hear that Mary's on top of it. I think it's terrific. Thanks, Mary, for working on this and helping sort it out.
Of course. Get some help from Paul News Wiki as well, from the chamber.
I'm sure they're all talking. I just want to make sure that, I don't want to walk in cold to that hearing on the 6th.
No, agree.
So we'll say that we need to get all the paperwork at least a week before the meeting? Do you want more time than that? Week is good?
I think it would be helpful to have a week ahead.
A week ahead, so we-
If we have questions, we can direct them to staff and do, do our homework well before the meeting.
Okay.
I'm assuming if it's a hearing, then it's probably got to be posted at some point, and so.
Yeah, we're posting the hearing and, you know, the only thing I would say is, keep in mind that if you don't have all your questions answered, you don't have to close that public hearing. You can keep that open.
Got it. Good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Any other? Any other items then for May 6th?
No.
Okay. Very good.
Can I go back to the housing workshop and just inquire as to whether the Yarmouth Housing Authority has been invited and has responded?
Yes, no, I can answer that question. Yes, the Housing Authority has been invited to the meeting and, yes, they've responded that, you know, they will attend.
Wonderful.
And so it's all set.
Looking forward to a very informative session for all of us on the next Tuesday. Excellent. Okay. Moving on to the next item. I just lost my agenda.
Individual items.
Individual items. Mark?
This is sort of a scheduling item, but I do think as a board, we should be thinking about this whole question of maintenance and care of parks and properties and have a very focused discussion with, with our management team after town meeting. Sometime to focus on this, because this is, this is an ongoing question and it may be helpful for us to get a better sense of, you know, how we're managing our parks, how we're, because it's not so much just the parks, but it's also buildings, you know. And the, sort of, sort of a deep dive into terms of our overall plan for managing parks and buildings, public property. And because this, I mean, we hear this all the time. And I think what we need to do is get our arms around it and better understand to what extent there are issues. You know, for example, with the, with the park, where we hear the constant complaints about the fragmities and the growth and the lack of seeing scenic vistas, I think just as a board, it'd be helpful for us to get up to speed on what's going on with that. And if, and if we do have a fundamental issue or problem. And so I would recommend after town meeting, we kind of revisit that.
Sounds good to me.
The only other question I have is, did we set a date on our goal-setting workshop meeting?
We did not.
We did not?
Yep.
Is that something we should at least identify tentatively? Madam Chair?
I would feel more comfortable if we were doing that when Tracy's here, so we can all look at our calendars. And also, I just raised that you do have an upcoming election on the 20th of May.
That's true.
You may want to wait to see who your new board is.
Yeah. No, and the only final individual item I have is, is that it was great to see the board recognize Ellie Lawrence for all of her contributions. You know, she's sort of one of the unsung heroes in town, you know.
Absolutely.
Given, you know, all the help that she's provided in so many areas. I mean, she's known for her love and her commitment to conservation and her interest in Bass River and the sailing program. But just, I mean, she's been involved in so many different things. And to see the turnout tonight was really, really heartwarming, to see this room packed with people here showing their love and affection for Ellie because she deserves all of it.
She does. It was well deserved.
Full disclosure, she's a neighbor of mine. My dogs refer, my dogs refer to her as Auntie Ellie. And she's, she's just been a wonderful friend. And it's, like I said, it's just great to see all of the outpouring of support and recognition for her many years of service to our community. And it was nice, quite frankly, to hear that she may be coming back. Didn't she give a hint there at the end?
Yeah, she did.
She was thinking of coming on board with another committee and we're going to have to pursue that because whatever, whatever she gets involved in is always, she's just such a huge asset to our community, so.
And she makes such a commitment when she does.
Exactly.
When you think of how many kids have her to thank for learning how to sail in this town, I bet it's pretty amazing.
You know, and the thing is, is with, that sailing program is such a widely supported and recognized program. And you're right, the number of kids, I mean, you were on the rec commission for a while and you know firsthand how, how important that program is. And how many young people, their lives have been enriched by being in Yarmouth and participating in that program. And she's a wonderful teacher, so to have her involved in that has been a huge plus.
And it's not just the kids in Yarmouth, it's the grandkids coming to visit, the grandparents in Yarmouth. She is, she has been invaluable and she will be greatly missed. And I'm glad we were able to recognize her today. Joyce?
I don't think I have anything this week.
Okay, Liz?
I could just let you know that the municipal energy manager, there were 24 awards made that went to 63 municipalities and five regional planning commissions. They, they have earmarked $5 million to go out for this program over the three years. And they're going to be adjusting the requirements because part of what Bill was worried about is that there are so many reporting requirements. Is that what this poor, whoever, energy manager we got?
20 hours a week of reporting?
Right, but they're going to be adjusting that. And what they're really focused on, and not even for the first year, is to get something accomplished. So they're being very reasonable. So, and we, within two months, we invoice for the 75% of the first year. And they will, so we have the money upfront, which is nice too. Just a few notes that I had on it.
Could perhaps forget. I mean, you were really ace-
Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved, sorry.
And second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have a voice unanimous. Bob?
Okay, I know it's late. I did have a couple of items, though. I wanted to just let you know, you know, last Friday, the town of Yarmouth was the host to the Massachusetts Association of Chamber of Commerce Executives Annual Meeting. That was a big event. People from all around the state. I was out there, was able to make some comments on behalf of the town. People were very impressed with our area, happy to be here. I want to let you know, last Wednesday, we traveled Slekman Flynn, Slekman Post. And I, we went up to the ABCC for a hearing on, you know, our ongoing case there. And I just want to say, I was never so proud of our select board members under cross-examination. That was very tough. They just did a great job and represented the town so well. And we don't have a decision yet, but we're awaiting a decision and, you know, but, you know, it was one of those situations that we were subpoenaed to go up there. And it was, you know, part of the game plan and that was so they could subject us to the cross-examination and the ladies, they didn't want to talk to me. I guess I looked too mean, but testimony was great. And so, another thing, I did want to acknowledge the receipt of a number of pieces of correspondence. And we heard, you know, comments this evening, you know, surrounding the whole issue of Mr. Tally and the sale of the lobsters and what could be done and all of these things. And I'll tell you one thing, we talked about this a little bit last week. And really struck me that there's so much confusion among citizens about zoning and how it works. I put together a little draft that I wanted to share with you and maybe you could give me some feedback on. And it's a citizen's guide to dealing with local zoning violations and things of this nature that, and Liz had mentioned the possibility of something like that, but I was thinking the same thing, that I would like to have information like this that we can help share and outreach with. You know, some of the questions and people's viewpoints on it are, you know, just so mistaken in so many respects. Like a perfect example is that the zoning decision of the zoning enforcement officer gets appealed to the zoning board of appeals. And so many people have asked me, well, the board of Slekman or the town administrator should have sat down with that zoning board of appeals. They're not elected, they're appointed. And should have told them, you know, what to do. And what people don't understand is that is specifically against the law. That when you're acting on those appeals under the Massachusetts Zoning Act, all you need to do is have one meeting outside of the hearing with that ZBA in advance of their taking, and what you've done is completely invalidated their whole decision and it gets thrown. And it's just one example of, you know, how people really don't understand. So I think having a guide for citizens could help. And I wanted to ask the board, you know, this question is, so obviously on this particular case, you know, the zoning board of appeals had declined to uphold the appeal. So the proponents and Mr. Tally, they're searching for, you know, what do we do next? And obviously, you know, they send someone the first thing in the morning down to town hall to pick up the papers to fill out for a petition to go to town meeting. And I got to tell you, if-
I think we're going to go to court.
Well, you know, they could still do that. The way the tree works, and it's in my guide too, is, is you can sue the town in court to overturn the decision of the zoning board of appeals, which, you know, that's kind of an iffy, dicey thing. And another aspect of the law, it does say that every property owner has the right to petition town meeting to look at the zoning. So you, you can't ask the town meeting. And the question I have for board members is, does anyone mind if I outreach Mr. Tally? And I'd like to ask him, you know, what he'd like to do with that petition. And my, my thought is, if I could prevent, I don't want a nonsensical petition to be received that forces us to hold a town meeting, but nobody knows what it does or it's illegal or something. And I know we've been through that. And, you know, the question is whether we try to direct Mr. Tally to have some discussions with the planning board before he submits his petition. Maybe they could give him some ideas on what he could ask for. Because when the petition comes in, the first thing that's going to happen is they ask to go in front of the planning board anyways. I just wanted to kind of let you know, it's a thought I had.
I, I think it's a good one. Bob, we should be here to help facilitate our residents. Not, not obstruct our residents. So I'd hate to have him go to the trouble of getting petitioned for a town meeting only to be told again it's going to be a non-binding article and everyone booing and having a tough time at town. We want it to be productive. If that's what he wants, then I think, yes, please- Then I, I think, yes, please reach out to him, and, and the planning board for their guidance on this, so that when they do come to a petitioned town meeting.
And I, and I think, if I can just add, I think it's important to provide at least education on process, on process. All right? The kind of amendment, the kind of adjustment that would be in order. I think that would be incredibly helpful. I agree with the Chair that the last thing we need is another repeat of that other town meeting, where we find at the last minute that there's a legal issue and a legal glitch. I think we may have, there may be a variety of opinions on the wisdom of the town's zoning. And, you know, on this board, we may not have consensus. On other boards, there may not be consensus. But the governing body is town meeting, and governance of town meeting is open to all. And so, at the very least, we should be able to provide some intelligent, some thoughtful guidance to residents, including Mr. Tawley, in terms of how to go about the process of having this addressed at a town meeting. And I think that would be incredibly helpful, very productive, and it might be a way to channel some of the anger and frustration that's out there in a much more constructive direction. So, I applaud Bob's offer. I think it's a sound one. It makes a great deal of sense, and I'm totally in support of it.
Any other comments from Joyce or Liz?
No, I think it's great. I, I wouldn't mind, it's up to you, but, Bob, but, you know, if, if one select board member were there, too, might, might be nice as well, when you meet with him, if you do meet with him, just because.
Liz, well, now, I'm going to hesitate on that one, because Tracy brought up a very good point, when she talked about the fact that we have to keep ourselves separate from that in the event that there potentially is further action that needs to be taken.
Okay.
And I think it would be wiser for us to have Bob sit down, and I think we're saying to everyone in town, you know, there are ways to work things out. You don't have to go on Facebook and vent. You know, we, we are here to help you. We were elected to help you, and we're going to do what we can to, to facilitate that. But there are laws out there, too. So, as, as Mark is saying, the process, knowing the process, I mean, there are ways of doing it.
But I'm also glad that we are answering the letters that came to us, and that's what Bob is, is handling for us as the select board people who are being appealed to. So, we, we are taking action, through Bob, to hear this and do something about it.
So, any feedback you have on the citizen's guide? We're working on kind of prettying it up, and I'm involving, you know, the key people and, and on this thing. My, my sole goal is to involve the appropriate parties, you know, at the planning board, so that when they do get to the public hearing and town meeting, it, it's more orderly.
And kind.
And constructive.
And kind. It was not kind.
No.
Needs to be more kind.
No, it was not. That's all I had for tonight. Thank you.
It is.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to adjourn. Do I have a second on that motion?
I was about to make a comment about Bob's stuff, but.
Huh? Go ahead.
Oh, okay. The thing that struck me about the hearing was that it appeared to take a lawyer with a second go-round to say, if your grandfather, look at the, look at the previous legislation, I mean, look at the previous case, you know, look at, look at what was decided in 1981. And it seems like that's something that we should maybe give a little sentence to here. If your grandfathered about something, look back at the past date and get that straight before you go to, to a board.
Right. No, yeah, I know. And, and it's hard, like, just listen to the discussion. I, I listened to the radio twice about the grandfathering. Nobody knows what that means. It's a term that's thrown around and.